The time is now seven oh three. Good evening and welcome to the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Prince George's County Board of Education meeting and welcome to two thousand and twenty-five. I am Brandon Jackson, Chairman of the Prince George's County Board of Education. To hear the meeting interpreted live in Spanish, please call five zero eight nine two four five one five five. Again, the number to call is five zero eight nine two four five one five five. Please focus your attention on the screen to hear the announcements in Spanish. For those who are unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Lastly, for recording purposes, the chairman reminds all board members to ensure their microphones are turned on when speaking. Board Member Robert Brown, please lead us in board prayer.
Thank you Chair Jackson. Here's the school board prayer. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Barton, please call the row.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Enderfull?
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mrs. Goins-McKens?
Present.
Mr. Jongo?
Present.
Dr. Moss?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
We have nine present.
Thank you, all quorumists present. If there is no objection, the January sixteenth meeting agenda will be adopted as amended. There being no objection, the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted as amended. Moving to item eight point zero. Are there any corrections to the December second, two thousand and twenty-four Annual Meeting of the Board of Education, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, second session of the December second, two thousand and twenty-four Annual Meeting of the Board of Education Meeting Minutes and December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Business Board Business Meeting Minutes? There being no corrections, the December second, two thousand and twenty-four Annual Meeting of the Board of Education Meeting Minutes and December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Business Board Business Meeting Minutes? There being no corrections, the December second, two thousand and twenty-four Annual Meeting of the Board of Education Meeting, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, second session of the December second, two thousand and twenty-four Annual Meetings of the Board of Education Meeting Minutes and December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Board Business Meetings are approved. Let's pause for a PGCPS spotlight. The chairman recognizes Superintendent House for the PGCPS spotlight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Happy New Year to everyone out there. I'm extremely, extremely excited tonight to really share with our PGCPS community and family an update from the CTE Department on the forty-seventh student-built home. I've actually had an opportunity to get by that home on a couple of occasions and see our students in action over the course of the last four months, so I think you'll enjoy this thoroughly.
When they first come, though, they're stressed out, they're nervous, and by, like I said, third, fourth trip, yeah, they get off the bus, what's today? We give them and chubu, away they go.
The student-built house is an opportunity for a number of our CTE students in the Prince George's County to really have the being there experience, really digging in with developers, construction workers, their CTE instructors, to understand what it is from start to finish to build in a very high-end community to make a difference.
You can teach me, you can show me all the diagrams, which is helpful, but I learn the best when I do it myself, and that's how I learn and master whatever craft I'm doing.
Just knowing that we're building this house for a family and putting it on the market is amazing.
You see the kids change, like drastic, and instead of them being overwhelmed would have to build a whole house, we just tell them, you know, we do this today, this the next day, and eventually, every time you come out, you'll see everything starts to come together. So it takes the stress off the kids. Why do I do this? This is a great job.
I have the greatest teaching job there is, you know? I get to be on site every day, teach kids how to pound nails, teach kids how to put plumbing in the walls, teach them how to do electrical circuits, and it's a really great job. I mean, it's a dream job for me. This is a real house that will be sold and real people will be moving in, so it has to be up to code, and, you know, we always say that, you know, you can put our houses up against any of the other houses down the street here, and ours is built better.
When the kids first start coming out, they're kind of intimidated, they're kind of like afraid to use some of the tools, especially the nail guns and the big saws, until we go through it with them a couple times. By their third or fourth trip, they're fighting over the nail guns, they're fighting over who gets around the saw. Just because they're in a carpentry class doesn't mean they have to be carpenters. They could be interior trimmers, they could be drywall guys, they could be painters. There's a lot of different things that they get to see, they don't get to see that in the classroom.
The students are here and they're asking questions, and they may find out that they don't want to do HVAC, that they might want to do a different phase of this house that we build, and, you know, they're learning from their experience, and it's great to see that every year that we do it.
Thank you Superintendent House and the communications team for the presentation. Now we're moving on to item ten point one, Report of the Chair. Welcome to two thousand and twenty-five. We hope you all had a rest for winter break and are ready to push ahead in this new year. The new year is a time of hope, renewal, and opportunity. It's a chance to set new goals and embrace growth. Let's make this year a canvas of vibrant possibilities penned with resilience, kindness, and determination. Together, we can make this year extraordinary, supporting one another, striving for excellence, and cherishing the moments that truly matter. Let's welcome the new year with joy, success, and boundless potential. At the last business meeting, the board voted to undergo a pilot program to have the next three meetings at the County Council Building. This has been referred to the staff for investigation, and what I've been told by our executive director, that they have been approved. So next month's Board of Education meeting will be held at the Wayne Curry Building in Largo, Maryland. As you know, we have several new board members also, so consequently, the chairman must appoint new committee chairs and committee chairs, and here are the committee assignments. For the academic achievement, the new chair is our student board member, Jamal Jongo. Let's give him a round of applause for stepping up, stepping up. So also on that assignment, we have Lolita E. Walker, Dr. Tiffany Enderfull, Zakiya Goins-McKens, and Brandon Jackson. So congratulations to everybody who's been appointed to the Academic Achievement Committee. Next, we also have the Board Audit Committee. It will be led by Dr. Tiffany Enderfull, Pamela Boozer Struthers as Vice Chair, Robin Brown, Jamal Jongo, and Brandon Jackson. The OBFA Committee will be chaired by Zakiya Goins-McKens, Robin Brown will be the Vice Chair, Dr. Felton Moss, and Jonathan Briggs. Policy and Governance will be chaired by Dr. Felton Moss, and the Vice Chair is Jonathan Briggs, Lolita Walker, and Pamela Boozer Struthers. Climate Change Action Plan AHA Committee will be chaired by Pamela Boozer Struthers. PCCAC Board Liaison will be Lolita E. Walker, and the Disability Issue Advisory Board will be, the Board Liaison will be Robin Brown. So at this time, let's give a round of applause for the new committee assignments. Looking forward to everyone's leadership. At this time, I would like to call for a moment of silence as we honor the memory of the following PGCPS staff, family, and community members. David Romero, Carpenter, Building Services. Erica Romero, Bonilla, Student at Bellesville Academy. Kaylin Ramirez, Student at Walden Woods. Kyler Ferris, Student at Barberry Heights Elementary School. Michael Clemmons, Student, Non-Traditional Program, South. Jean Elong Linguen, Student, Non-Traditional Program, South. James Fitzgerald, Non-Traditional Program, South. Colisia Gray, Building Supervisor, Martin Elementary School. Raina Corbin, Teacher at Patuxent Elementary School. Steven Mitchell, Paraprofessional, Parkdale High School. Thank you. Moving on to announcements.
Claire?
Thank you. I also wanted to make mention, I didn't hear her, but another scholar, Ariana Rosas Sales, for her moment of silence as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the addition. We'll make sure to add her to the next agenda as well.
No problem, and thank you. The other thing I had a little earlier, I apologize. If we can double back on the Chair's report whenever you get an opportunity, I can do it at New Business if you like. I don't know when you want to do it. I just had a question around the movement to the Wayne Curry Building.
Thank you, yeah, we can do it at New Business. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll ask everyone to please focus your attention on the screen to see the list of upcoming meetings over the next two months. Please note, our next Board Business Meeting is scheduled to occur February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five at the Wayne Curry Building. All righty. Please continue to check the board webpage for updates and more information. Next, we'll be moving to public comment. The Chair recognizes the registered speakers. Registered speakers have three minutes to make their presentation and may not relinquish any part of their speaking time. The board will recognize your comments but will not address them. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once, if you continue, your comments will be muted, and you may be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, Principal, etc. There are fifteen live public commenters tonight. Our first speaker is Isaiah Smith. Second grade student, Maya Angelou, French Immersion, Special Education.
Hi, my name is Isaiah Smith. I am here to talk about being a student with special needs. My mom asked me if I can pick any teacher in the whole world, who can it be? I told her someone who is nice and understands me. I love learning new things, and I try to be my friends in sports. I like when my teachers help me understand new stuff. It might take me a little longer to get my work done right, but I try my best. I like to ask a lot of questions. Sometimes I have challenging days, or I have a hard time sitting still, but none of this doesn't mean that I don't want to learn. One thing that helps me is when people take the time to just understand me. I like to be a leader like a team captain, and I am very helpful. Connecting with people is really important because I think it helps us work together. Being different is okay. Everyone has something special about them. If we can learn to understand each other and help each other out, we can make our school a better place. I hope that you can help make sure that every student like me gets a chance to feel understood and to learn in their own special way. Thank you for listening to me today. I am.
Thank you. And his mom is Teresa Smith, I want to recognize you next.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The meetings were perceived as hostile because the staff took offense to the questions that I asked instead of being taken as a tool to obtain clarity. I recall a meeting at the secondary level where I had just heard the word combata for the first time. I couldn't even actively continue in the discussion because I tried to comprehend what was being said and whether it was a tactic used to deflect the issues being discussed. If this wasn't bad enough, there was a time when a staff member stood up exerting her voice to bully me while everyone sat there and watched. This was a direct quote from my published piece of work. I want to begin by acknowledging that this was an experience that predated both this board and this administration. For those familiar with the IEP process, you know who the meeting participants were, but do you know what I was up against? One word can sum it up: culture. In an effort to improve the experience for all parents and students in special education, I began advocating here in April two thousand and twenty-four. In just nine months, I am grateful to say that this administration and the board members took immediate action. I finally felt heard, understood, and like a true contributor to shaping what families need from this system. Let's be clear, changing a culture takes time, but I believe in acknowledging both the effort and some of the initial outcomes. Earlier this week, I had an IEP meeting, and the team opened up the discussion by asking for my input rather than dictating the course of action. Following the meeting, I received a call from the Family Support Center. These small actions made me feel valued and that the team cared. Guess what? This can change the entire tone of a parent's experience. I want to take this opportunity to thank you all. Thank you for not silencing my advocacy, thank you for understanding the true intent of my efforts, thank you for recognizing how advocacy can create positive change for over sixteen thousand students and their families, and I thank you for allowing me to simply be a parent in the process. There are times when I have to remind the schoolhouse about policies, regulations, and statutes, and why this may be necessary, it sometimes overshadows the small wins that my child and others achieve. I recognize that much work remains. Addressing the immediate issues was a strategic step, and we've gained some traction. Families now feel empowered and confident that their voices matter. I ask that we continue this collaborative approach, and most importantly, I ask that we continue to genuinely care about how our actions shape the culture of PGCPS.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. Before I call the next speaker, I want to stop and make sure that we do proper protocol. I think we have two elected officials in the audience today, so I want to recognize former State Board Member Clarence Crawford, as well as State's Attorney Ayesha Braveboy. Thank you so much. From my understanding that, oh, current board member, excuse me, and State's Attorney, from my understanding, you want to speak, we'll give the floor to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board of Education, and of course, members of Prince George's County Public Schools. I am so proud to be here as not just your State's Attorney, but a proud graduate of the Prince George's County Public School System, and I want to thank the many superintendents and administrators and principals, vice principals, and educators and support staff who made my experience in Prince George's County schools one that I will always remember, and also helped to prepare me to lead the criminal justice system here in our great county. On December thirty-first of last year, I sent a member, sorry, a letter to the board, and I wanted to just read that letter for the record here today. Dear Board Members, as you approach the two thousand and twenty-five bargaining agreement, open discussions with the Prince George's County Educators Association, I want to extend my sincerest wishes for success. There can be no more important negotiations than between Prince George's County Public Schools' most critical partners, nor a more meaningful subject than our schools, which county taxpayers fund at sixty-two percent of the county's general fund budget. I support and urge you to maximize transparency during these talks. My experience is that transparency where possible cultivates trust between negotiating partners and amongst the important stakeholders we serve, which are the parents and taxpayers of Prince George's County. I can think of no greater bargain than the one reached by the partners whose joint decisions establish the framework for success of the Prince George's County Public Schools. My hope is that, excuse me, my hope is that the talks conclude with an agreement that will be a source of pride and satisfaction for the board and for PGCEA, and that both parties leave talks confident that a bargain has been struck, that it's also a roadmap to success for the Prince George's County Public School System and for the students and families it serves. Again, I wish you much success in everything you do, and as always, I look forward to partnering with you. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. The next speaker I'll call is Camila House from Maya Angelou French Immersion, PTSA.
Good evening, Superintendent House, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening, and the urgent need for the increase on behalf of Maya Angelou French Immersion parents about the urgent need for increased staffing, training, and support for special education students at Maya Angelou French Immersion. Our school currently serves approximately thirty students with IEPs, but we have only two special education teachers for the entire school, K through eight. This staffing level is simply inadequate to provide the individualized support and interventions these students are entitled to under the law. Under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea, teachers are mandated to implement IEPs and accommodations, but many classroom teachers also lack the training and tools to do so effectively. This leaves students with autism, ADHD, and related executive functioning difficulties, as well as other learning challenges, struggling to access the support they need, and in an environment where they're also learning a second language. For example, students with executive dysfunction may appear disorganized or unable to complete tasks, but these behaviors are direct results of their disabilities and require specific strategies to address them, but if the teachers don't know, they don't do it. Without proper training, these teachers often misrepresent the needs or fail to provide adequate accommodations, negatively impacting these students' educational experiences. This training issue also applies to 504 plans. To address these challenges, I ask the board, the school system, to reevaluate the needs of Maya Angelou French Immersion, conduct a comprehensive assessment of the special education and 504 plan needs at MAFI, including staffing, resources, and training gaps, increase certified staffing, hire additional certified special education teachers and paraprofessionals as needed to meet the needs of students with IEPs, and ensure proper implementation of accommodations. Regularly train classroom teachers and paraprofessionals to provide ongoing professional development for classroom teachers to recognize and address student special with special needs, particularly executive functioning difficulties and other learning and behavioral challenges, and implement IEPs and as well as 504 accommodations effectively. Strengthen accountability and ensure that both IEPs and 504 plans are consistently and effectively implemented through regular monitoring and oversight. With additional resources, training, and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. House. Next, we have, and forgive me if I say your name, pronounce your name wrong, Jonia King, Individual, Special Education.
You actually said it perfectly, thank you.
I practiced it a couple times.
Oh, good. Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Jonia King. I have two boys that attend PGCPS. They are seven-year spread, so please pray for me. So as I said, one is in high school and one is in elementary. My journey in PGCPS started when my oldest transitioned into the second grade. He started off in private school from K-three through first grade. However, the difficulties that he had with executive functioning and, you know, with learning in the manner in which he learns was a struggle for him. We later found out that he was ASD-one, so Autism Spectrum one, but was not aware of it at the time. We started off in second grade, going into Capitol Heights Elementary. He struggled there quite a bit. The principal, I talked with the principal, I asked for resources. I didn't know the exact terminology to use. However, I asked, I said, my child needs help, I want him to be successful here, and so they said, well, we'll help you, we'll give you the resources, but didn't get the resources. I didn't even get a meeting with the staff until after the school year had ended, and my son had already had issues, whereas that was not his boundary school, so the principal ended up signing, you know, that he needed to go to his boundary school, in which I didn't want him to go because the school in which I placed him was the one that was a better fit for him educationally, because I didn't want him to fall short with that. Now, moving forward, I have my son that's now in elementary school, meeting the same barriers, he is ASD-two, and however, it's just a problem with getting IEP meetings. They started getting a 504 plan, but I suggested that he still needed the IEP, in which there are many barriers. So I had to go through sending emails and, you know, to the board and everything just to get, you know, a meeting with the staff, which I feel like it shouldn't be that I'm going above people's heads, where I should be able to talk with the staff there and be able to get the resources that we need. I asked for things like a dedicated aid for them because they were having issues with their executive function, issues with, as far as, I guess, environment, social, you know, aspect, you know, things of that nature, but they were learning, they were doing well academically, and they were still met with a no. Teachers basically were saying that they were overstretched, the classrooms were overcrowded, they weren't able to best meet the needs of the children, then they trying their best with everyone, but they have some children that fits in one barrier and another children that needs extra help. So basically, I'd just been advocating for my children just to meet nothing, to get nothing, and the resources that I'm asking for, I've been told a hard no. And so I just wanted to, you know, impress on the board that we need revision of the 504 plans, the IEPs, and the children with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Next speaker we have is Mr. Timothy Meyer, Mount Rainier Elementary School, PTO President, Fully Funding the Blueprint.
Thank you very much, and welcome back from spring break to everyone. First, sorry, winter break. First, thank you to the superintendent and the whole PGCPS team for all your hard work getting our buildings ready for a safe return. I emphasize "safe" because many of you have heard me say over and over, every child has the right to get to and from school safely. That certainly applies in snowstorms as well, so thank you very much. Last week was a I emphasize "safe" because many of you have heard me say over and over, every child has the right to get to and from school safely. That certainly applies in snowstorms as well. So thank you very much. Last week was a vivid reminder of how a school's impact goes far beyond the classroom. For many families, schools are the centers of our communities, a critical source of food, especially at our hundred-plus Title I schools, a source of belonging and friendship and mental health for us kids. And let's be honest, those hours at school each day are the structure helping so many parents do the work that provides for their families. Now think about the many vital roles that our schools play, then look at the budget challenges we now face, and some monopolist politicians who are basically saying the blueprint is too hard, so sorry, but never mind. If we don't fix our budget issues at both the county and state levels, our schools won't suddenly close. But make no mistake, the impact will be felt. A scaled-back blueprint without full funding would make it even harder to retain teachers and staff. It would put school construction, CTE programs, and wraparound services, especially for early childhood and special needs students, at risk and take away critical extra funding for schools with the highest concentrations of poverty. I have been a Title I PTO leader, Title I School PTO leader, for six years, and I know that the blueprint is working. Remember, we have the blueprint in the first place because our students faced a $7,800 adequacy funding gap. Investing in Maryland students is not a line item in a budget, and the blueprint doesn't have an asterisk that we only support our students during a surplus. It's a decades-long commitment that here in Maryland, education is the priority, and it's a promise that we expect our elected officials to keep. We've built parent coalitions before on pedestrian safety, on climate change, and so many other issues. Parents and this board must come together, and we must work together, speak as one PG CPS, and make clear keeping the promise of the blueprint isn't negotiable. It's expected. And I ask PGCEA also to please use your voice and help make sure that full blueprint backing is a baseline requirement for your support for politicians. A fully funded blueprint must be our joint priority, and that campaign has to start right now. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next is Michelle Clark, Individual, Bargaining.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Clark. I am a early childhood special educator at Kenmore Early Childhood Center, and I came tonight to talk about the collective bargaining process and how it needs to stay transparent. We have, over the past two presidents, starting with Teresa Dudley back in 2018 and three years ago under Dr. Christie, used an open bargaining process. And one of the things that I personally did the last time, actually, the last two times around, is inviting members of the board to come out and watch the negotiations. The school system represents you. You're the ones who make the final decision. And the best people to see what's going on are the people who have to make those decisions. Now, I understand there may be some barriers, but we need to work through them, and we need to get to that point. The issues that these parents have brought up about special education, those are the types of issues that we can bring out in open bargaining by inviting parents and students to speak. Who knows better what's going on in our school system than the people who are in it? It's very different being up at SASSR or in another administration building than it is being in a classroom. I can tell you personally, this is now the second day where my co-teacher, because of an emergency, has been out and the paraprofessional in my classroom has been out. I have not had a fourth person, we're supposed to have two paraprofessionals in a pre-K co-talk classroom, for four years. It's not a new problem. It is a continuing issue with staffing, with caseloads, which I know can't be bargained, but it can be talked about. And we need to realize that the reason why some of these students aren't getting what they need is because your educators are so dang stressed out that we can't provide what we need. We can't emotionally give our students everything they need. My students, I tell my parents every year, your babies are my babies, and I'm going to treat them as such. And I do. I never knew there was such a thing as a pre-K autism classroom, but somehow this year I seem to have one with students with more and more intense needs. It's happening more. It takes a lot. You have to give a lot. And if we at least had our extra person in our classroom, it would help us a lot. I understand what these parents say. I see it every day. I am at my wit's end. I was up all night last night doing reports, and I can't do my work during Student Day ever because of these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Next public speaker we have is Mr. Stanley Martin, Athletics. Okay, moving on to Ms. Phyllis Wright, Individual, Safety and Security.
Welcome back. Happy New Year, everyone. My name is Phyllis Wright, to those who don't know me. I'm here today because of two things. You had a town hall meeting just yesterday, day before yesterday, and what we did not like was the calls were screened before the people was able to answer your question. So if I wanted to call in to make a comment to you, I had to talk to someone else, and they didn't like what I had to say. They would move on to the next caller. I'd like if we have a town hall that each and every person wants to speak to whoever on the board or superintendent, they're able to ask their own questions and not go through a third party. Number one. Number two, school safety. You know, I'm big on school safety. I have two beautiful daughters here, Prince George's County Public School System. My heart broke for that baby, Emma Toma. I worked with Chair Brandon on the school safety project, where I went out there and I volunteer a lot of hours. I volunteer a lot of hours in our school system. We need more security. We need teachers to be able to break up a fight, but they said it's not in their contract. They won't do that. So if a child is being assaulted, they just sit there and watch. It won't help. So we need to put that in place. We need to have someone able to go in the restrooms or to monitor restroom or how many kids is going in the bathroom because we know a lot of fights are happening in there as well. I volunteer at Wim Hall and I volunteer at Flowers, Flowers High School, where's my daughter. We need to help. You guys got to do better. We have to protect and secure our children when our parents are dropping our kids off to you all. You all have to make sure that they're safe. That baby that was attacked, my heart goes out to her because that could have happened to my daughter. We need to do better with security. We need to make sure our children are safe when they walk on our property. We need to do that. We need to get more parents as well to volunteer. I can't get, find my app on my, on my, my phone. It says it's not available, so. I know we're just coming back from a new year, so all this week, I couldn't pull it up. So maybe we can look into that as well. But we have to do better. We have to do better. In the next town hall meeting that you have, sir, please let the people speak. Don't let them talk to someone else. If they don't like what they have to say, then they won't be able to speak to you. I don't think it's fair to the public. I think we all have a right, everybody in here have a right, to speak and say whatever they need to say when it is addressed to our children and to Prince George's County. Because everybody don't want to say, I don't have bad children. I have very good girls. And we need to recognize our good children as well as we recognize our bad children as well. So we need to do that as well, too. So thank you all so much, and have a nice year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. I want to recognize Ms. Shannon Reed, Individual, Examining Process to Improve Learning.
Good evening. I'm a teacher who has taught in PG CPS since 2001 and a parent whose youngest child is currently a senior in PG CPS. The quality of education my oldest child received from fourth to twelfth grade in PG CPS was remarkably better than the education either of my younger two children received from K to twelve in PG CPS. It is my responsibility as a parent to know about my children's education and to engage my childteachers and the district in meaningful ways to improve the quality of that education. Children who have this level of support are more likely to become readers, writers, thinkers, and creators. I also think that this level of parental engagement strengthens communities since empower parents actively participating as responsible, capable beings create a model that invites others to do so. This is critically important for students whose disengagement may be a reflection of their parents' disengagement. Engaging parents in upcoming negotiations for teachers' contract also allows parents to hear actual teachers speak about the reality of current education and consider how they might work better as parents and advocates. Five years ago, I could not imagine nor grasp the changes I now see in teaching and learning. It is no wonder that people outside of the classroom cannot fathom the demands and the stress teachers have endured. I do not believe most parents understand the level of teacher sacrifice because teachers' voices have been significantly muted by fatigue, practices, and structures. In at least the last five years, there has been one single in-person teacher town hall. At that one, where real teachers spoke clearly about real issues, the district resorted, after that one, the district resorted to virtual town halls where very few teachers spoke. The teachers who speak often present trivial matters instead of speaking insightfully about the issues that have created a shortage of licensed teachers. Listening to these teachers, it is if the ten long years I spent at a high school dealing with nonsense did not exist. However, I know for sure that every single principal at that high school chased hordes of teachers out of the school during that long ten-year stretch. These principals demanded childlike obedience of adult professionals instead of modeling respect as adult professionals. My first year there was marked by shingles, and my last year there was marked by foolishness. In education, as is often the case in life, failure is often rooted in dysfunctional social and environmental conditions. The upcoming negotiations for a new teacher contract is an opportunity for teachers to speak to their professional and extended community about things that can make education better. Retaining and attracting quality teachers in this new year with a new board and new possibility seems possible if PG CPS uses this opportunity to begin working with all the parts, unite it, to make the community better. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kyra Marshall Walker, Maya Angelou French Immersion, PTSA, Agenda Item PGCEA. All righty, Annette Jones, Individual, Agenda Item PGCEA.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to ask that PG CPS reconsider your decision to meet with PGCEA to facilitate an open bargaining process. This process creates a win-win for all both parties. It builds trust, which is needed in any negotiation. Please be reminded that in the last two negotiations were an open bargain negotiated strategy which was extremely successful for both parties. PGCEA received critical acclaim and was sought after for consultation to mirror the success and positivity that was displayed in the process. This strategy provides transparency in exercising a democratic process that is crucial for both parties. Such approach offers firsthand and personal stories, which makes a difference to provide an on-time response on issues. Open bargaining allows each party to demonstrate fairness and reasonableness and allowing everyone to witness the negotiation. This method will elevate our leaders and reinforce the trust in both parties to arrive at amicable agreements. Open bargaining diffuses attempt and open to positive intent and honesty in processing of the negotiation. Please understand that it is an inclusive strategy that aims to problem-solving collectively to meet the needs of both parties openly where respect and honesty are exercised openly. What this does is to build relationships and ideal partnerships for the good of the county. I'm asking to consider open bargaining and urge all board members here who are knowledgeable of PGCEA priorities to encourage PG CPS to open bargaining, to consider this strategy. Open bargaining offers a safe space to negotiate differences amicably and to reach the solutions that are purposeful and effective. My voice is going. Traditionally, open bargaining is redundant. Traditional bargaining is redundant. Open bargaining now provides full disclosure and always allow everyone present to discuss, explain, offered, accepted, or rejected. This strategy would be encouraging to future hires and place our county in a positive direction of being transparent, providing clear communication in the bargaining process, and build and preserve workplace relationship. This would certainly boost our retention deficit. As I said before, the days of negotiating behind closed doors, finding the cultural secrecy is over. Consider open bargaining, please.
Thank you. Dr. Susan Windsor, Individual, Agenda Item PGCEA.
Greetings, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent House, esteemed colleagues, and superstar students, parents, and community members. I am Dr. Suzanne Windsor, an at-large director of PGCEA, graduate of Windpark High School, and pupil personnel worker completing my 32nd year here in PG CPS, speaking as an individual in support of open bargaining. Oh gorgeous Prince George's County. We stand at the precipice of uncertain political times with an incoming administration that is hostile against both public education and labor unions. Our opponents stand at the ready to assail us on every side through a formal national agenda laid out against us in such writings as Project 2025. But in the words of NEA President Becky Pringle, when they go low, we go local, because when we fight, we win. So we, as a community, must be on one accord and walk lockstep together against the swelling tide of misinformation and the censorship of truth. Transparency builds trust, and trust flourishes into unity through which we may continue to progress together. This is why it's vital that we continue with open bargaining for the common good of all of our educators, students, and the families we serve. We cannot turn back now. We cannot go back to dark private room deals that appear clandestine and only benefit the employer. We must continue to receive open input from staff, students, and parents as we are the actual experts in the educational and social emotional needs of those we have a duty to serve and represent. Why such a tax on education? Because, as we know, education is the great equalizer in preparing our students, our babies, to have a successful and fair chance at a future. A free and appropriate public education provides the roots to the foundation on which the bricks of civility, culture, and critical thinking are laid. Open bargaining for the common good ties education with community growth and financial success as we strive to not only educate our students, but to uplift the whole of our people in our community so that our students may stem, bud, and blossom into productive citizens that not only touch the state, but touch the world. Illustrious board members, I humbly beseech you to honor your constituents, the educators that are counting on you, and our most precious resource, our children. We are depending on you to enact and uphold policies and procedures that keep the lines of communication open and transparent to ensure for a negotiation process that is beyond reproach. Please protect, promote, and support open bargaining so that we may continue to bargain for the common good of us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Felix Lazaro, Individual, Agenda Item PGCEA.
Good evening. Esteemed members of the Board of Education, Superintendent House, PG CPS officials, and staff. My name is Felix Lazaro, a special educator at C. Elizabeth Trigg Regional School and the product of alternative certification route via Notre Dame of Maryland University. of Maryland University. We have 154 students with profound or significant cognitive disabilities, and the number is still increasing. They function similar to two- or three-year-olds, although they are in the elementary levels, middle schools, or even high schools. Students start coming in at around 7:30 in the morning. They eat breakfast. After their book bags are hung up in the cabbies, communication journals are read for parent messages, if there are any. They need to be uploaded into the Maryland Online under parent contacts and replied to immediately thereafter. During winter, the sweaters and jackets and all extra layers of clothes need to be taken off and hung in the cabbies as well. All these layers must be put on when they go home exactly the same way they showed up in the morning, otherwise I will get telephone calls from the parents. During instruction, the classroom teacher has to implement the whole group and the small group centers with the supplementary aids and accommodations contained in the IEPs of our students. If the student's IEP annual review takes place before November or December of the school year, the IEP annual review will have to be scheduled again before the end of the current school year. These are only snapshots of what is done in the classroom every day. Members of the Board, I invite all of you to come to my school. Our superintendent has obliged, so please do so, and consider open-door bargaining for negotiation. By the way, the title of my speech is "CRI and Regional Programs Go for Open Bargaining." Thank you very much, and mabuhai!
Next, Mr. Brian Glover, Individual, Agenda Item PGCEA.
Good evening. Protocol has already been established. I am Brian Glover. I'm speaking as an individual, PGCEA Board Member-at-Large, vocal music teacher at what? The Barack Obama Elementary School. Mr. Moss hoped to see you soon visit my school. I want to address the importance of engaging in opening bargaining with our union. First, before I became any of the leadership, I've observed opening bargaining and really enjoyed just observing. We couldn't comment, we could watch and see. To see the players fighting for my job, our scholars, it's a thrill. It's really rewarding. I had a lot that I was gonna read and write, but my colleagues already went over and I don't want to bore you to that. But I'm speaking from the heart, and plus, I'm excited. My scholars just, we just did a concert at the school for a Martin Luther King essay contest. We need you. We voted for you. We marched for you. We went door-to-door to make sure you were here, and we are thankful for each and every one of you, everyone. But we need this so we can feel as though our voice is always heard, that we're not forgotten. We love our scholars. I've been teaching 24 years, 11 years back in Prince George's County, and love being a vocal music teacher and of course, director for my elementary scholars. We are mentors. We are the leaders. We help build their strength. They come to us for the support. Think back of your vocal music teacher, your dance teacher, theater, the arts, the things you weren't able to do in regular class you could do in a performing arts class. We're counting on you. We're glad you're here representing us. Do not forget us. Please do not forget, we are all in this together. Yes, this is 2025, and Happy New Year, if I didn't say that. I just wanted us to make sure I had the additional points. Just remember this, and I'm not gonna bore you. This is my first time ever speaking at a school board as an educator, and I'm thrilled and honored to have that chance to do this. But we are you. We represent you in the forefront with our parents, and they see us first before they see you. Please remember us. God bless, and have a great, successful school year, and please be our team player with PGCEA. And remember, we're all here for our scholars. God bless everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. The next speaker is Filamina Owon. Sorry about mispronouncing your name.
I will tell you that my husband of 31 years will not be pleased, and he's here somewhere today, so it's Owona. Good evening, everyone. May I begin? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Superintendent House. Happy New Year to all of you. My name is Filamina Owona. I'm a 25-year veteran educator. This evening, I'm here to address the issue of open bargaining. Collective bargaining should be transparent, inclusive, and collaborative. That has been said several times tonight, but it bears repeating to ensure that educators who are directly impacted by policy decisions, voices are heard and are valued. Keep in mind that our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. Open bargaining is vital in a broader campaign to make changes we need in PGCPs. PGCPs has real challenges ahead: vacancies, blueprint implementation that we have to continue to fight for, et cetera. So a lack of transparency during negotiations is not in our best interest. Educators, students, families, and community members must have a voice in addressing challenges in our schools. We are all interest holders. PGCEA and PGCPs have used open bargaining since 2018. That brought about many real changes that positively contributed to teacher retention that impacts student achievement. Every educator brings ideas and value to our profession because student needs vary. You heard from Felix. You heard from our parents, and by the way, they are from my school. Those are my students. I didn't know they were going to be here. But PGCPs needs to meet with PGCEA in open sessions, providing public disclosure of all our negotiated proposals and an opportunity for public comment. I think Brian said it best when he spoke from the heart. This is an opportunity for us to really collaborate. All of you here, we appreciate what you bring, but we are on the forefront. Every child is different, and we are the ones who deal with these students. We have to come up with all kinds of strategies. We have to come up with different things, and sometimes we don't have the resources. But when we can come up here and tell you that what we need and you listen in collective bargaining, that means a lot. I remember standing in front of this board some time ago and talking about resources that we needed in restorative practices and other things, and this very board telling us that it didn't have money to do so. And now you see what it leaves with discipline issues and several other things. We need to collaborate, so please consider open bargaining for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public speakers for the night. There is one written comment. The written comment can be found on Board Docs. It is as follows. Mika Caldwell, Individual, Special Education, has been uploaded to Board Docs. We received no pre-recorded videos. Thank you for all the comments. Moving on to Item 12.1, the chairman recognizes Dr. Donna Christie for the PGCEA presentation.
Thank you. Alright, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present tonight. I am Dr. Donna Christie, President of the Prince George's County Educators Association, representing your 10,000 professionally-certified educators. And I'm here to discuss how open bargaining and bargaining for the common good have transformed negotiations in our district. Together, these approaches ensure trust, equity, and collaboration in decisions that impact our students, educators, and community. When we talk about bargaining, we're talking about the future of our schools. And our state's attorney used the word transparency. I think you heard it from several other speakers as well. Transparent and community-centered approaches bring people together. They let parents, educators, and community members see how decisions are made and ensure those decisions reflect shared priorities. And transparency is not a luxury, it's a necessity. When decisions are made in secret rooms, we risk losing the trust of the people we serve. These principles are not just effective, they're necessary to maintain the trust in our public schools. So what is open bargaining? Open bargaining is about inviting everyone with an interest in our schools, our educators, our school board members, our parents, and the community into the process. It allows them to witness negotiations firsthand, removing any room for misconceptions or misinformation. Instead of hearing secondhand accounts, they see the real issues being discussed and the challenges we face and the thoughtful rationale behind each position. Transparency strengthens trust. What are you afraid of? Open bargaining shows that you have nothing to hide and everything to gain: trust, unity, and solutions. When interest holders observe the process, they see the mutual commitment between the Board, the educators, and the community to work together and resolve challenges collaboratively. Open bargaining doesn't just address the what of negotiations, it shows the why, fostering understanding and alignment across all parties. Bargaining for the common good goes beyond wages and benefits. It's about addressing the issues that impact our students and families, like housing insecurity, mental health, and equitable school funding. Bargaining for the common good ensures that negotiations reflect the broader priorities of the community, building schools that serve everyone equitably. And these principles are not new to us. Since 2019, we've successfully used open bargaining and bargaining for the common good to negotiate two agreements. These agreements delivered real benefits like improved working conditions, safer environments, and better supports for students. And our commitment to transparency and collaboration has proven that when everyone sees the process, they believe in the outcome. We recognize that the Public Employee Relations Board, also known as the PERB, has issued a regulation requiring closed negotiations. However, our legal counsel believes this regulation far exceeds the PERB's authority under Maryland law. The law is clear. The PERB cannot adopt regulations that restrict or weaken protections for public employees, and closing negotiations does that. It undermines transparency, trust, and the progress we've made. It's not just bad policy, it's bad governance. This regulation from the PERB doesn't just violate trust, it oversteps the law and undermines protections meant to safeguard fairness and transparency. The power of open bargaining lies in its ability to create trust and unity. By allowing interest holders to observe negotiations, it dispels the myths and misunderstandings that can arise in closed-door processes. They see the complexity of the issues and the collaborative effort required to solve them. The transparency reassures both the Board and the community that decisions are being made with integrity and mutual commitment. Open bargaining replaces suspicion with clarity, conflict with collaboration, and doubt with trust. It's actually a much less adversarial style of bargaining, because when you know that your constituents are watching, everyone comes to the table with the attitude of problem-solving instead of just, "We're gonna get more and you're gonna get less." Bargaining for the common good ensures that our negotiations align with the community's priorities. By expanding traditional bargaining to address issues like housing insecurity, mental health, resources, and equity, and funding, we create schools where every child can thrive. This approach has already delivered results, and continuing it will only deepen the trust and collaboration we've built with our community. Our community understands the importance of transparency in negotiations. That's why thousands of people signed a petition to keep bargaining open. Sorry, there's thousands of names here. When thousands of people sign a petition, it sends a clear message. Our community values transparency, and they are demanding accountability and a voice in the future of their schools. They know that when interest holders can observe the process, it fosters trust, dispels that misinformation, and shows a unified commitment to addressing challenges together. Here are some responses we received from the community on the petition. One community member shared, "In my opinion, we need to continue to work together, school board, students, and parents, for the kids." Another shared, "Doing negotiations in closed-door manner is not a way to build relationships with your community. Transparency helps build trust. As an administration, there should be nothing to hide." This underscores how transparency strengthens the partnership between educators, families, and the Board of Education. And again, our legal counsel is clear. PERB's regulation to close negotiation is inconsistent with their statutory authority. Maryland law explicitly states that negotiation procedures are a permissive subject of bargaining, and the law that created the PERB expressly prohibits it from adopting any regulation that restricts or weakens protections for public employees. Adopting open bargaining aligns with both the law and our shared commitment to transparency. The decision before you is about values: transparency over secrecy, collaboration over conflict, and trust over division. By supporting open bargaining and bargaining for the common good, you honor the voices of educators, parents, and community members who are invested in our schools. Together, we can ensure that negotiations reflect our shared priorities and serve every student, teacher, and family in our district. Open bargaining isn't just about keeping negotiations transparent, it's about honoring the trust our community places in the process. When interest holders can observe negotiations, they see the dedication and effort that goes into resolving challenges collaboratively. By continuing to support open bargaining, you ensure that trust, clarity, and mutual commitment remain the cornerstones of our decision-making process. So let's move forward guided by trust and equity. Tonight, you have a choice: to stand with transparency and the law or turn away from the principle of trust and accountability. It's not just the right thing to do, it's the only thing to do if you want our schools to thrive. Please keep bargaining open. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Christie. So I do want to recognize the Superintendent House, if you have any comments.
What I'd like to do is turn the mic over to our General Counsel, Mr. Darnell Henderson, for any comments here.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. House, and good evening, Board members. Regarding our ongoing labor negotiations with PGCEA, it should be clear that in May of 2024, the Maryland Public Relations Board, the PERB, enacted regulations regarding negotiations set forth in COMAR 14301301, which now requires the PGCPs to negotiate in good faith in closed session. And so that has been the administration's position that in good faith, in closed session, is the law, and that is the way that we've chosen to move forward in compliance with the law.
So with that being said, thank you, Darnell. I will move into my superintendent's report. Thank you, Dr. Christie, and members of PGCEA and community that are here as well. We appreciate you. Welcome back again, and thank you, Chairman.
I think we have Board members who have a question. Dr. Christie, if you want to get back to the mic.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So the Board Chair recognizes Dr. Moss.
Thank you both for being here this evening. There's no question about where I stand on this matter. As someone who's been an educator, I wore my red tie tonight on There's no question about where I stand on this matter. As someone who's been an educator, I wore my red tie tonight on purpose as an educator. Mr. Henderson, I do want to hear your perspective on what are the consequences of not following the COMAR regulation, given my strong stance in open negotiations? And I would also love to hear PGA's perspective on how PERB actually overstepped its statutory authority, and to what extent do you disagree with that conception from PGCEA Attorney Henderson?
Yeah, thank you very much, Board Member Moss, for the question. So as it relates to, I'll answer the, the last question first. Has the PERB overstepped its boundaries? That's for the, that's for an argument for the PERB, for PGCEA to make, for PGCPS to make. But the risk here is one of unknown consequence. And so there, usually when there's a, a issue with the PERB, there's one side, the board, against the, the the labor relations, and sort of having that conversation and trying to figure out the conflict. The, the issue here is, is that any attorney worth their weight in salt could not advise their client to actively go against the plain language of the law. And maybe the PERB overstepped its boundary, but that is not for a school district or for the labor union to make that decision. It's for the PERB to sort of figure out whether or not their take or stance is not in line with the law. And I saw, so there is an unquantifiable liability here, that if we go down a route where we open up negotiations, what kind of consequences that leave us as relates to the agreements that are created based on actively breaking the law to enter into those agreements?
Thank you. All righty.
Thank you, Dr. Moss, for the question. And if it's okay, I'm gonna let our legal counsel do the rebuttal.
Good afternoon, Damon Felton, Attorney with MSEA and PGCEA Attorney. So in this particular case, it's very clear, and I would say that I'm very certain that the regulations, this is not law, the regulations that were promulgated by PERB have violated the law. The law restricts them from actually weakening or restricting the protections provided by the public employees or employee organizations. So what we have here, previously, the current contract was negotiated under open bargaining. That's something that the negotiations in the association had the right to previously. Therefore, the PERB, who was subsequent to, or the, the regulations which are subsequent to that negotiations, cannot interfere with what occurred in the past, cannot interfere with the organization's right to open negotiations. And it is very certain, in my opinion, that the regulations, when looked at again, will be overturned. I would say to you this, I believe that the PERB did not have the history that we have here of open bargaining. We're not aware that this occurred in Prince George's County, promulgated the statute, or the regulations, again, not statute, but the regulations. And when they get an opportunity to learn all the facts, and review the law, and review everything that we've sent to them previously, they are going to come to the right conclusion. So therefore, what we're asking for you to do is come to the right conclusion at this point in time. That is something that you have the right to do. There, in my opinion, are no consequences for that. And again, you have your recommendation from legal counsel, but if, if recommendations from legal counsel were always accepted, I wouldn't have some of the frustrations that I have at my job. All right?
Thank you.
So I would say to you, it's to do the right thing. You have the ability to do this. I'm saying to you that the PERB will subsequently do this when they look at this and consider it fully and understand what it really means. But we want to be able to do this now so that we can get negotiations started and get things moving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, do you need, that was Damon Felton, by the way. I don't think we introduced his name, for the record.
Thank you. Board Member Boojisdrad.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation. And Mr. Felton, you just hit on exactly where I wanted to head was how quickly the board could address this, because it, as a board member who's been on this board for six years and is, you know, there's been two very successful negotiations in this model. This has been quite upsetting to me because it's created conflict that we don't, do not need right now at all. So when I look at this board, and I see Judith Rivlin, renowned attorney in labor, I see a former NEA, advocacy services director, I do not understand how this happened, number one, and two, how they cannot move quickly. Like when I see, you know, to, at least those two people whose reputations I know, can we ask them to move more quickly and resolve this? And, and that would be, be my request of the attorneys in the room.
Board Member Walker.
Thank you so much for the presentation. You know, the, the, the small piece that I'll add to this is that, you know, I don't believe it's the Board of Education who has the expertise to decide where the law is and where we move next steps. We have our attorneys who are here in order to guide us on what the law and regulations say. And so what the regulations say that are based on the law tells us by way of what the expertise says is that we will not be following the law should we choose to move forward. I, as a board member, have, don't have any issues at all with the amazing negotiations that we've had over the last couple of years. Whether it's in good faith or for the common good, it has always resulted in something that is favorable for our unions and PGCEA in particular. With that said, I guess what I'm looking to, to, to see, one, I thought we were under negotiations already. Are we not in negotiations as we currently speak? Okay, thank you for that confirmation. But what I'm looking to understand is the PERB or our, once they decide on where it is we go forward, once they overturn what it is they said, then we'll move swiftly in order to make sure, sure that we entertain the law and we follow that law. So from my perspective, although I have seen the amazingness that's happened in the last couple of years, I have no reason to believe that that won't continue even behind closed doors while we follow the law. When that is overturned, if that is overturned, unless someone tells me differently or shows me differently, I haven't seen that. What I've seen is the last two successful negotiations happen. So with that, I am under the perception and the belief and the vote, should it come to it, that we will follow the law, and that comes from the attorneys that, that guide us in our everyday. But thank you so much for the presentation, it was very helpful.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no more lights, we will move on to the next section. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I, I want to start off by acknowledging that January is National Board Appreciation Month. We know the work that you all do, the commitment away from your families, that you focus on, on a daily basis, and today is a, an opportunity to just say thank you for all that you do, not only for our students, but our families throughout the community in PGCPS. Let's, let's give our board members a big hand for all that they do. Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to, to welcome back everyone after a very, I'll just call it snowy winter break. It was great to see everyone ready to embrace the, the start of the, the 25, 25 section of our school year. I'd also like to express my most sincere gratitude to my operations and communications team. As we all saw during this, this winter storm, it was hard work and took quite a bit of patience to, to really navigate keeping everything in front of us and every individual safe. And, and I'm, I'm eternally grateful for, for our team and the weather, in the, during this weather event. We really appreciate you. So I want to shift to, to weather, being that I've, I've shared a little bit about the appreciation of our teams that, that focus on weather. And given that the inclement weather that we've all experienced, I'd like to ask my Chief Information and Technology Officer, Andy Zuckerman, Dr. Andy Zuckerman, to really speak a bit about our virtual learning and, and where we are. Dr. Zuckerman?
Sure, thank you, Mr. House. So as board members may know, we have a virtual learning plan for a prolonged state of emergency that is required for us to submit to the state of Maryland every two years. And that allows us to pivot for an extended emergency such as a pandemic, a significant period of closure. We are not prepared to pivot on a dime for virtual learning for inclement weather. We have 104 of our schools that have Chromebooks, for example, in carts in schools. And so, you know, for example, on last Thursday, if we had wanted to pivot to virtual learning, we have to assure that every student has the technology to be able to do synchronous virtual learning, because the law changed a year ago that if you're gonna do virtual learning after you've exhausted your snow makeup days in the calendar, you can only do it after you've exhausted your snow makeup days. It has to be synchronous. And so that's just something operationally, logistically, even educationally, we had questions about the efficacy of that. And so we opted this year, along with many other counties, some of our neighbors, Charles Howard, for example, to pursue just a traditional snow makeup day plan. And that's, so that's, that's the process that we're using this year, and I just wanted to provide an update on that.
Thank you, Dr. Zuckerman. I'd like to shift to, to discipline updates. As, as we move into the new year, we've reviewed, this time every year, we take a look at data. And both discipline and chronic absenteeism is, is something that we've truly tried to focus on. Current data suggests that disciplinary removals are, are down compared to the previous year of this specific time. We're seeing a reduction, we've seen a reduction so far of about 652 fewer disciplinary removals, which represents a reduction of about 12.8%. The highest number of disciplinary removals are, are originating within middle schools, quite frankly. Of course, sixth through eighth grade, with sixth grader suspensions ranking the highest. And it's interesting, because the research tells us, quite frankly, those transition years, sixth grade and ninth grade, are typically the, the most difficult years. So it's definitely something that we're paying close attention to. Disruption, insubordination, and failure to follow policies are the new incident types in our Code of Student Conduct this year. About 15% of all suspensions this year were due to these incident types alone. There have been recent concerns shared over safety in schools. And I'd like to note that violent discipline incidents have also declined by 21% compared to this period last year, which is a reduction of about 607 incidents. Incidents involving guns and weapons are also down from last year, perhaps due to the increase of our security enhancement equipment that we've placed in a number of our middle schools and high schools. From a school culture and climate perspective, the survey data from 2024 showed a slight improvement in students' perception of feeling safe in PGCPS schools. Now shifting to chronic absenteeism. Current trend data suggests that students are attending school more consistently than this time last year. Chronic absentee, absenteeism percentages have reduced by 4.4 percentage points respectfully. The goal with principals starting this year out was a 3%, 3% goal, and we've gone over that goal, which we're very proud of, but we still know we have more work to do. K-8 middle schools span the, the lowest chronic absenteeism data, which is about 15%. Now shifting to summer school chair. Finally, you may recall a, a few board meetings back that there was questions regards to summer programs. And I'd like to invite our, our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Judy White, to share a brief overview of her summer school program, and including the timelines, summer positions, and the site locations as we move into that, that portion of the year. Dr. White?
Happy New Year, and good evening to all of our board members. I don't know if we are gonna have the presentation up. Awesome. So I'm gonna, I know this is posted, so you've probably already reviewed, but I'm just gonna quickly go through to kind of set the stage of what happens as, as it relates to summer programming. My office has the privilege to facilitate summer programming for the entire district. That means whether it's a systemic program, whether it's a school program, we put a process in place so that we're not operating in isolation. So we're gonna talk about timelines quickly, the type of positions, and all, this presentation is based on school year 2024. So right now, just so you know how the process works, right now, we would send out a memo, this happened last January, asking for any school, any program, anybody in our district that wants to do a program will apply to us so that we know, so that we can put them in contact, we can have, we have monthly planning meetings, we have office hours with every single program, we connect them to Food Nutrition Services, Transportation if necessary, our budget team, so that we're making sure that their budgets are right. And so we're moving them through the process to get ready for summer school. That means we're hiring, starting in May and June, we're working with human resources. The program takes place in January, some programs in August. Payroll is continually being processed. And then the program, once we're in session and out of session, we have record-keeping because we're asking them to communicate to us what happened in their program, and then we're planning a debriefing document for you. So realistically, summer planning and/or summer school is a 12-month cycle. My clicker is not moving. Charles, if you could help move me to the next. Thank you. Here, I just wanted to point out, we really look at 214 positions to run summer school. So this just lists, if you're interested in all the different type of positions over the entire system, that's what this slide would show. Here, we are talking about across every single program, every single grade, you have opportunities for either acceleration, enrichment, transition, intervention, credit recovery, or original credit, depending on what grade you're in, depending on what type of program it is. Some of our programs are face-to-face, and some of them are online. And the delivery models could either be in-person, virtual, asynchronous, or synchronous. So last year, for the first time, our school system created, in English, Spanish, and French, programming, four weeks' worth of programming, a comprehensive book where parents could work with their students at home to really set a program for all summer long, was very interactive. It had videos, it had icons, it was on the internet. And later on, I'll show you the amount of views that we had. The reason that we chose to go this route is that prior to that, we were doing hubs in the summer, and we had maybe a thousand students who attended, and the average day out of 20 days absent was five to six days. And so we identified that, number one, we were not touching every single elementary student, and even those that came were missing days. So we really wanted to find a process by which, at home, especially for our youngest learners' families, could put a child on every single day, work with them, build them as our partners. And so that's what that looked like for our elementary. Our middle school, we did have a small systemic intervention program for our students in middle school who were identified as demonstrating learning loss based on assessments and based on grades. In our high schools, of course, we are looking at credit recovery, those students who have failed a course that they need for graduation, and acceleration, those students who choose to take some, um, original credit courses that are geared towards graduation. Those were face-to-face and online. Here are just some of the course offerings for high schools, so that you know what was offered for original credit and what was offered for credit recovery. Then we, in addition to our programming that talks about acceleration, we just wanted you to know that we have a lot of enrichment programs that happen. These are listed here for you to see. Every year that changes, but that, these are the ones that took place last year. Many of them are around our early, middle-year colleges, and we offer bridge programs for those programs, especially to make sure that our students are ready and geared up to enter those programs in the fall. When you look at those programs that are not systemic, here are the numbers. 18 schools offered programs in the elementary level, five at the middle school, five at high school, and seven cross-level programs. So that would be your K-8 programs. Summer school-funded locations, we wanted you to kind of have ideas so that if you're looking to see if a school fell in your district, this, these are the schools that offer those programs. And again, this is in addition to what was done systemically. Support, we want you to know that every single summer, we provide support for our special education students, our English language learners, and our earliest learners through our Judy Center programs. Now, we create a summer website for our families. We promote that out on all of our partners. We make sure that they have the logo, even if it's our faith-based partners. if it's our faith-based partners. Here is where everything exists. It's where our families can tap into the elementary programs for every single week. It's where they can find a listing for all the programs, it's where they can find the phone numbers for all the programs if they need to have contact. All things summer school are at our PGCPs Summer Learning Spark website. On that website, we also want to make sure that our community partners, that our parents, and that our students understand and have summer tips for support. So, what are those things that you can do at home with your student, those everyday opportunities to make sure that they're successful? What are those things that our community partners, as they're running their own programs, can focus on in terms of the standards and objectives we'd want them to cover? We also, on that site, have what does your child need to know to be successful in the next grade, so that our parents can be reviewing that as well. Again, we debrief when summer program is over, we don't just stop. We say, what went well? What do we need to work on? What can be better as we move on? We work with all the external partners within the school district to talk about what could go better in their departments to help our schools facilitate summer. Here, I wanted you to say, so you heard me mention that we only had about 1,000 students that we touched. So, this goes to show you that even more of those students, what you see in blue is the programming that was in English, the programming in Spanish, and the programming in French. Me talking about it doesn't do it justice. I would love at some point to show you what that website looked like so you can see the richness of what we created. We could probably bottle it up and sell it to other districts, that's how good it was. We were really like Tyler Perry Studios, because that's how much work it took to make that come, make that happen. But you can see the number of times and the number of hits that we had from all of our scholars at every single grade, so we're excited about that. This is what you'd be interested in. So, for every single program, and we work to get this better every year, they identify on their own, an attendance target, and then what they want to target is terms of success. So, on our website, you all will just click the link, and you will be able to find a complete report that shows every single program and what they targeted. We're working to make sure that they're picking goals that make sense. And so, again, because I facilitate, we try to make sure that we review them, that it makes sense, and, and that they move forward with that. Any questions?
I want to recognize Board Member Brown.
Thank you, Chair Jackson, and thank you, Dr. White. Great presentation. I just have two questions.
Sure.
The first question I have is, can students who do not go to those schools, are they still able to have an option to still enroll in those summer programs?
So, a school that offers a program usually is for their students. So, every single school, if, if they choose, can put money towards those programs. A lot of schools op, offer opportunities, because we are CSI schools, but we have so many schools that are Title I, they offer a lot of after-school programs during the year because they believe that within the 180 days is where we really need to hit students versus that 20-day window in the summer. So, when they're choosing to offer in the summer, it is normally for their site. That's if it's a school-based. Some of the programming that you saw, where it was enrichment, many of those are cross collaborations, you can apply to go. For example, we have the William Schmidt Center that any student could sign up to go and have weeks of enrichment to go and do the confidence course and learn about STEM. So, it depends on what program it is.
Okay, perfect. So, because I feel like every year, the list kind of changes.
It does.
And so, I was kind of curious as, like, how are schools chosen?
Schools choose themselves, in a sense. So, every school has a budget, and some schools determine based on what's taking place in their building that they want to put a certain amount of money from their SBB in place. So, they would have done that last March for this summer coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, I want to recognize Board Members Akia, then Pam, then Dr. Moss.
Thank you, Chair Jackson, and thank you, Dr. White. I just had a quick question about the data that we get for those pre- and post-tests. Are the teachers who are the teachers of record for the next year, do they get access to that information? How are we connecting summer learning with what happens during the school year?
Yes, so normally, they don't because when the schools choose what their data source is, well, let me say this, if it's a school-based program, it's possible that they could because they're in their own buildings. So, their teachers normally apply, they're hired, it could be additional teachers. The school has that data source. The school also builds their own pre- and post-test, so that is a possibility. My office does not facilitate that process. For many of our programs, when it was systemic, we use, for like high school, we know it's original credit, credit recovery, you would know that because it hits the transcript. For our middle school program, we make sure that our staff receives that information because that was the difference of an eighth grader failing to move on to high school versus not. Elementary school, because we were using, when we ran systemic, we were using our platforms of iReady, and those, that information was already there, available for the teacher. So, I don't want to say that our schools that are running their own programs do not because it's possible that they do, because they're within their own building.
Thank you. Dr. White, thank you so much. I did click through to the data reports, and two things really stood out. One, I want to say thank you to our educators and congratulations to the students on the progressive completion rates are, are great. I did notice that for the, and that's high, I'm focused on high school, I apologize. High school completion rates. And then the, my question is, it's also about 1,000 less high school students in these classes, and is that also good news that fewer high school students need to go to these summer school classes?
Yes, so if you, last school year, and if he wants to jump in, Chief Strater shared that when you looked at our, our grades, the grades were getting better from when we were in a pandemic. And so, that means the more students who are passing, the less students who need to have credit recovery. We offer credit recovery for free because we want to make sure that our students have an opportunity to regain the credits that they need for graduation. So, it means that during the year, we absolutely were getting better. The other thing is, you will notice, we minimized original credit because we wanted to make sure we had enough teachers to cover any student who needed to regain a credit.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And then a question, this is more directed towards Dr. Coleman. I, I've been a proponent of additional transportation for summer programs, and I wanted to, you know, I, I guess, ask if the lack of transportation has any impact on students who participate at the high school level, and if there is an opportunity for more transportation for summer programs.
Thank you for that question. And we don't have an issue with supporting the capacity needs of the academics office, if you could imagine. We transport 87,000 students at this current time, and it'll be a much smaller number during the summer months, so we can support it.
So, I would need to go back. Dr. Davis and I can work with the high school office. Again, every program that puts funds in place puts funds if they need transportation in for that, so we would need to find out the reason that they chose not to. For our original credits, some of them, they run so many different schedules of who's during the day, who's in the evening, because we want to accommodate those students who also have jobs, but we can find out why specifically they didn't report back out to the board.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
That would overlap with questions for our budget hearings as well, so.
I'll gather that information for you.
Thank you, Dr. Moss.
Thank you so much for the summer, summer learning presentation, Dr. White. I had a question in another portion of the superintendent's report that I wanted the superintendent to speak to. I don't know if other colleagues of mine experienced this, but I, I appreciated the work that our, our district team did to ensure we were responding to parents around weather, the weather update that you provided. I think we did a, a great job trying to make decisions with a very, in a very tough situation. But a number of our parents and community members don't always understand how we make these decisions, so if you just take a moment to educate them on how we actually came to those decisions, I appreciate the team bringing that virtual learning report together. But I think it would, it would benefit our, our parents and stakeholders if we outline how we actually make these decisions.
Dr. Moss, I really appreciate that, that opportunity, and I'm going to have Dr. Sharasa Coleman. We spent a lot of early mornings and a lot of late nights talking to each other, and, but here we are. So, I'll let him, hit him, him go through it because his team is, is responsible for the process and providing a recommendation eventually to me.
Yeah, thank you so much for that question. It definitely is a lot of work in preparation for what could turn out to be an inclement weather day. We try to gather as much information as we can in real time. That includes National Weather Service updates. We coordinate with our community partners, Department of Public Works and Transportation. We also are part of an emergency weather team with the entire county government leadership, along with Director Baldwin and myself and our security group. And so, we meet prior to any weather event so that we can get a collective understanding of what is expected to come and what the preparations are from both the county level as well as from our school district level. We coordinate with our other local jurisdictions so that we can get a prediction from, from their vantage point of what they're expecting and what their potential outcomes could be. Sometimes, we have to deviate because what's happening further north may not impact us the same way, but we certainly do try to coordinate in our responses. And lastly, if I would say, if I would say, we try as best we can to make the decisions early enough that families can respond, right? We know that it is a challenge when we call school off, that families still have to go to work, they still have to make preparations for their children. So, we're trying to balance that, collecting enough information while also giving families enough notice to make other arrangements.
And that's actually what I was going to follow up on. We, Dr. Coleman and I had a, a number of conversations around making sure that we give our, our community enough time, and those are sometimes tough calls simply because weather patterns shift, they move, they don't bring in what they say they're going to bring in, and you never want to be wrong. But I think in, in the instance of this past storm, we got it right, and, and we kept our patrons safe.
I appreciate that response. It took just 30 seconds. I just want to say, the district didn't run out of salt, so folks were blaming us for it, so I just want to make sure we clarify that the district didn't run out of salt. Somebody else ran out of salt higher than the district.
Alrighty. Thank you so much. I want to recognize Vice Chair Briggs.
Thank you so much, Chair Jackson. My question is for Dr. White, and first, welcome back. Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for the well wishes, and also thank you for the presentation. I did have a question because I know that we've had a summer enrichment program for several years now, there's been great success, things happening there, but was just curious if you could speak to some of the results for academic performance coming out of the online program for students.
So, this year, we, you talking about elementary? The elementary program?
Yeah, and also, I just wanted to also add in, if you can't speak to any of the things, then if we can have like maybe some data shared after, this could be a subsequent thing, but whatever you can speak to right now.
Sure, I can speak to it, actually. The online program for our elementary scholars was to keep them engaged. It was not to look at, did they grow? It was about how do you, as a parent, every single day, not have to think about what to do for your child to keep them engaged? We want our, our elementary scholars reading, we want them manipulating, we want them to be entertained, we want them to have tactile, we want them to be totally engaged in just keeping the love for learning. So, we didn't put into that platform ways to mark where they were and did they keep moving. What I will say is that when we look at our DIBELS data, and we'll be bringing that to Academic Achievement in February, it shows that our students did not decline. And so, for that, we're thankful. So, I can bring that data at some point and share that data, once we have that report and I let Academic Achievement see it first, to share that with you, but we did not have a summer slide.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that would be helpful if you could share that.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Board Chair recognizes Board Member Jango.
Good evening. First, I want to say, first, I got to address the students of Prince George's County. Thank you so much for all the students that, that messaged me during the four days of our, I guess, extended winter break. I got over like, I think, 150 messages mainly concerning the ice on the roads. I first just want to say on record, I'm pretty sure only PGCPs is only allowed to clean their property, not the entire district's streets, because I definitely, I think that was one of the main things that I, I seen, and I was just trying to, you know, make sure that students understood it. I was also able to, you know, email, I know I emailed Chief Boyd and Superintendent House, mainly kind of giving photos of streets and buildings that students had texted me and said, oh, there's ice on this road, I don't think I'll be able to go to school. And a lot of students did feel kind of frustrated with the fact that they weren't, their neighborhoods weren't cleared, and I, as much as, you know, as much as that, you know, makes the, our transportation, you know, harder at the end of the day because of the fact that if their roads aren't clear in their neighborhoods, they're not able to leave their neighborhood to go to school. And I definitely seen a lot of, I could definitely say I've seen a lot of improvement within the past couple of days of our roads getting cleared. And I just wanted to ask, when it comes to making these decisions, are there, is there, is there student input allowed to be added so that this, that decision can be, I don't want to say made faster, but definitely like, just so that the students can feel heard? Because I think that was one of the biggest things that I seen in my comments when we did end up opening up our schools on, on Friday. So, I, I don't know how that process works, but if there is some type of way to have students implemented into that process or into that team, I would love to know how.
What I will say, and, and Mr. Jango, thank you for your support and the 150 individuals that reached out to you during this particular time. We, we take everything to heart, quite frankly. It is a process. We have a number of individuals that are actually in those neighborhoods, that are actually on county roads, working with the county, working within the school district. So, there are a lot of players in, in the game already in terms of weather and, and what it looks like. What I will say is that any feedback that I get from, from board members, I take to heart and make that a part of the conversation that I have with my ops teams during our ops calls. So, we continue to welcome that feedback as we move into hopefully no more winter events over the course of the year, but we can't promise anything.
And Superintendent House, if I might, might add, thank you so much, Board Member Jango. We have, to Superintendent House's point, six transportation supervisors that when we have inclement weather, they're on the road. They're assessing our neighborhoods, they're into the trips and routes so that they can determine if there's ice, if it's unsafe, and they feed that information back to Transportation Director Baldwin, that then comes to me and then to Superintendent House. So, I can just assure you and also your constituents that safety is always our number one priority.
And I also want to add that one of the things that I was really pleased with as we moved into this weather event is that the county connected with us and asked for specific routes so that, so they actually focused on 40 or 50 of our routes where they were going through to ensure that our buses had a safe, a safe pathway. So, that, that type of teamwork is extremely important, and, and we're thankful for that. We know it wasn't perfect at all because it was quite a, a difficult scenario. We would have loved for, for every route, but, but they did everything that they could, we did everything that we could, and, and I think we're in a, in a good, safe place as of today.
Go ahead and finish your question. Oh, okay. And then I'm also, I think, well, yeah, within like the past 21 hours, I did have students email me and reach out to me about ice still being like on their school property like during, in the sidewalks. And I think one student said that like a teacher slipped. I'm, I'm not 100% sure because of the fact that I don't go to that specific school, but is, I guess, because I'm going to definitely screen record this and post this later, where can students or teachers, well, I guess, teachers have their own way, but where can students be able to reach out to your team or reach out to the transportation team or reach out to our clean, just reach out to anybody about ice still being on their school so that there's able to be an assessment made if they need, if we need employees to come back out?
If it's at a particular site, we need to start at the site level with the administration at the school and report it to the office. If that information comes, you know, directly to you, please feel free to, to send it, send it to me, and, and we'll get it down to our ops team, but we want to start at the site because each site has a specific responsibility in reference to keeping their sidewalks, keeping portions of their, their building walkable to ensure that there are no, no accidents, but we do want to start at the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that include your question? Okay. Dr. Anafu.
Good evening. Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you so much, Dr. White, for your presentation. I want to somewhat echo Vice Chair Briggs' request for data specific to some of the outcomes of the summer programs, but also add on to that, I'm curious about the support being provided for special populations in our summer programming. And, you know, this is news to me, but I'm glad that, you know, I'm learning a lot as I'm, as I'm going through this, that schools have the ability to choose whether or not they are. offer these summer programs, they have the ability to also create their own surveys. And so I'm just really curious about what we are capturing in terms of outcomes, if we're disaggregating that data and then sharing it back with schools, because, you know, I'm thinking, you know, as a parent, as, you know, a former educator, you know, I'm thinking about our school leaders, do they have the necessary information that would help them make informed decisions about how they are allocating funds in the school year? I'm wondering if we shared data to show that, you know, some of these programs are actually really benefiting our students, especially those in our special populations, that school leaders would make different choices about how they're allocating their funds. So I'm just, I'm interested to see the data and also hear a little bit more about how we're sharing those outcomes with school leaders across the board.
Sure. So in terms of our school leaders, just know that all year long, we talk about data. Chief Davis has a process in place where every single quarter, we have stat meetings. Principals have to come with their data, they build a school performance plan, they have to identify within that plan what their goals are for the year. They usually have to pick three. One must be around reading and one must be around mathematics as a part of that plan, and it will be good for you to see what they have to do. They have to really do data analysis to get to root causes and then build a plan from there. Every month and then every quarter, in front of the chief and their associate superintendent and instructional director, talk about what's hitting the mark, what's not. Wrapped around that is content to make sure that if they're struggling with, like they're English learners, or they're struggling with a specific population that we're supporting them. In terms of our CSI and ATSI schools, they too have different summits that they have to go to. Their plan based on MSD is more extensive, way more extensive if you see it, where they really have to dig into what is the root cause. We've built in some programming this year, O-GAP and some other things around specific content strategies to work with our schools. I'm only giving that context extra because some of, you know, so many are new, and I want to make sure that we're, making sure that you have the knowledge. I say that to say, they know their data, the 15 days in the summer isn't going to help them plan for what they need to do. What they need to be planning for are the benchmarks we provide, where their students are performing, where we as a district work with them to say, these are the standards that system-wide we're not doing well in, and this is how we need to work together to build for that, and this is how we need to look at every individual student's data point, work on grouping, and work on how to make it better for them throughout the year. Summer, they know their data, they see it if it's an individual program, middle schools get theirs back, high schools we know for performance. But when you have a chance to look at the document and you want to talk more, I would love to talk more offline if you'd like to, in the partnership, and then maybe that's something we can also talk about on Academic Achievement.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your question, Dr. Anafu? Okay, great. Standing on more lights, we will move on to the report of the committees. The chairman recognizes the board committee chairs for their committee reports. Policy and Governance, the chairman recognizes Board Member Dr. Moss for the Policy and Governance Committee Report.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. I think it's befitting, given the scope and authority of this committee. Chair Jackson, we do have one of our state officials in the building who just walked in, Delegate Kent Roberson, who represents the 24th District in the General Assembly for Prince George's County. So just wanted to make sure we recognize him. The Policy and Governance Committee is charged with facilitating short and long-range strategic planning for the school system, providing oversight of board policy and legislative and government matters involving federal, state, county, and municipal governmental agencies and officials. The committee shall ensure that board governing policies are current and compliant with federal, state, and county laws and consistent with best practices in public education. School year 2024 through 2025 committee meeting schedule, the committee has maintained its monthly meeting since August the 20th of 2024. During the school year 2022 through 2023, the committee work plan and progress is laid out as follows. The committee's approved work plan for the 2425 school year was introduced and reported to the full board in October of 2024. The committee continues to focus on the recommendations received from the board and superintendent for board policies that required review due to legal ramifications, citation corrections, recessions, and cycle updates, and to be in alignment with existing administrative procedures to be enacted. The status of those said policies based on 2425 work plan are as follows. Out of 49 recommended policies, 22 policies are enacted, nine policies have been rescinded, 14 are currently under review, and 24 are scheduled to be reviewed. The list of policies and their statutes can be found on board docs. In accordance with Board Policy 9340, the following suggestions are for board consideration. Policies for public comment is where I'll begin. Our policy developing curriculum documents for instructional programs in elementary and secondary schools. Policy focused on possession and use of alcohol and drugs on school grounds. Policy 1113, informational materials and announcements. Policy 3323, purchasing. Policy 5168, automated external defibrillators. Policy 8265, evaluating the superintendent of schools. These six policies were revised to align with state laws or had reached their seven-year mark for review. Policy 5204, bus transportation for cheerleaders, majorettes, et cetera, recession. Policy 5205, proms, recession. Policies 5204 and 5205 are being rescinded following the Annotated Code of Maryland Education Article 4402, which highlights that the superintendent of Prince George's County Public Schools is responsible for the overall administration, day-to-day management, and oversight of fiscal affairs of PGCPS, including the management of activities related to each of the school system's areas of operation. Policy 9110, number of members and terms of office. Policy 9310, adoption of policies. Policy 9330, adoption and amendments of administrative regulations, all of which were in recession. Policies 9110, 9310, and 9330 are being rescinded due to their language redundancies and other policies. And finally, policies for first consideration, the following policies are being recommended for first consideration. Evaluation of library materials. Policy 2566, student identification cards. Policy 5113, attendance, absence, and truancy. Policy 5143, bullying, harassment, or intimidation. Policy 6153, field trips. Policy 8101, policy development. On behalf of the Policy and Governance Committee, I recommend the policies for board consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. If there's no objection, the board will adopt the recommendations outlined in the Policy and Governance Committee Report. There being no objection, the recommendations are adopted. Recommendations are adopted. Moving to 15.1, the chairman recognizes Superintendent House for the Transportation Action Plan Second Quarter Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As promised to this board, we want to provide a quarterly update in reference to transportation. So I'd like to invite our Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Sharaska Coleman, to the microphone, as well as our Head of Transportation, Mr. Kiba Kewal Baldwin. Gentlemen?
Thank you so much, Superintendent House, for this opportunity to provide a brief update regarding implementation of our Transportation Action Plan. Good evening, Board Chair Jackson, Vice Chair Briggs, Board Members, and members of the public. Formative, a third-party independent transportation consulting firm, completed an audit of our transportation system in school year 2023-24, and has continued to provide technical support and assess the progress of the implementation of our Transportation Action Plan on a quarterly basis. They provided a detailed report, and today's presentation will first be a summary update of those findings focused on the implementation of the Phase 1 prioritized recommendations. And second, we will introduce the focus of the Phase 2 prioritized recommendations that will be implemented in school year 2025-26. This school year, we are focused on implementing the five prioritized recommendations listed here. We are continuing to encourage all families who use buses to do three things. One, sign up for the Parent View, the Parent Portal for the Student Information System called Synergy. Two, activate a Stop Finder account when an email link is sent to them. And third, set up geo alerts to be able to track the bus as it travels and receive push notifications to their phone when students are dropped off or picked up. This Transportation Action Plan has a multi-year implementation timeline. As such, we are committed to making progress while recognizing that our system still has challenges. Here is a brief snapshot of our data. Director Baldwin will go deeper into this data on the next slide. Director Baldwin?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Happy New Year, everyone. This comparison slide displays the progress of our Transportation Action Plan. We are in the second quarter of a multi-year plan for the transportation improvements, and we are seeing progress in many areas. But we are also continuing to confront challenges. To start our review of the data, planned trip utilization is six trips assigned to each bus, 3:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the afternoon. As of the second quarter, our planned trip utilization has improved from 5.3 in October of '23 to 5.9 as of December 2024, which means we're achieving maximum utilization by ensuring we have a bus assigned to a trip on all three tiers. With the increase in the student assignment to our buses, which was 52.9% last year and is now 66.4 as of December 2024, we're using buses more effectively by placing more students on each bus while not overloading them. The number of students assigned to a bus has increased by roughly 1,400 students. This has contributed to adding 43 routes and 131 more active vehicles. However, even though routes and vehicles have been added, bus trips have been made more effective as we have been able to safely eliminate over 2,500 stops. One challenge remains is the average walk to stop. The goal was to increase the average walk to stop from .24 miles to .46 miles. However, as of December 2024, the walk to stop distance is at .22 miles. While we're committed to this goal, throughout this process, we have not jeopardized the safety of students, so where stops had to be maintained for safety of students, they were. Staffing remains a key challenge to increasing the overall capacity and efficiency of our transportation system. From October 2023 to December 2024, the number of available drivers, 858 roughly, has not changed. This is not enough drivers to have an assigned driver for every existing route. As a result, drivers are doubling trips, and doubling trips at each tier to provide safer arrivals to home and school. As a follow-up to the audit completed by Formative, they conduct their independent data review on a quarterly basis. The second quarter data analysis revealed the following. PGCPS has achieved meaningful progress in seat utilization and stop consolidation. And again, through their second quarter data analysis, it shows that we have also improved on our bell time alignment and balance for both the AM and PM. Here we talk about our efficiency challenges. His staffing, the second quarter data analysis from Formative also shows that staffing still flat from the 2324 school year, while ridership demand has increased. The number of open routes still remain at 189. As a result, drivers must continually double trips at all tiers. This increase of ride times affects our performance, our on-time performance, and lowers morale of our employees due to the extra workload.
In Phase 2, we are continuing to refine the implementation of our Phase 1 prioritized recommendations and also enhance transportation service delivery by expanding in several key areas recommended from last year's audit findings. Some of the Phase 2 enhancements have already begun, others will be implemented at the start of school year 2025-26. Recommendation 2, listed here, we will continue to make bus trips more efficient based on actual ridership counts. This includes the continued consolidation of bus stops where appropriate. Recommendation 3, over the past six months, the Department of Transportation, Department of Safety and Security Services, members of the Prince George's County Board of Education, and parents have worked in collaboration with the Department of Public Works and Transportation, members of the County Council, and municipal leaders as part of a school pedestrian safety work group to develop recommendations to improve pedestrian safety. In addition, PGCPS also has two approved safe passage coordinator positions that will support district ride pedestrian safety efforts. Recommendation 4, we have approximately 7,400 students who have opted out of transportation so far this school year. We will continue to stress to families the importance of opting out when they know they don't need transportation services. Recommendation 5, since the start of the school year, parent engagement with the Stop Finder app has steadily increased. We now have approximately 28,000 subscribers, which is 2,000 more than at the end of school year 2024. As a new feature within the Stop Finder app, the transportation team will assign geo alerts to families that have not created one. This will allow us to communicate with over 20,000 families who have not previously received push notifications related to their daily bus status.
Recommendation 6, last year, we introduced alternative passenger vans and non-CDL drivers into our multimodal transportation mix. This approach proved effective, and we are now expanding this fleet with 25 additional non-CDL drivers and 20 new passenger vans. Once the expansion is complete, our fleet will consist of 50 non-CDL drivers and 36 vans. Recommendation 7, in a moment, you will hear from our human resource partners regarding efforts to attract and retain bus drivers and bus attendants. Recommendation 12, a cross-divisional team was established in November 2024 to identify ways to refine the student enrollment and registration processes to include specialty programs and early childhood centers. At this point, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Eugene to discuss staffing in greater detail.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year once again. I first just want to take a brief moment to just thank all of the emergency service personnel staff for the tremendous work that they did last week, ensuring we were returned safe and sound. They're truly appreciated. As relates to the slide, as summarized, total driver headcount has increased and open FTEs have decreased. We remain committed to ensuring we have the staff necessary to safely transport our scholars in a timely manner. While the style references a December bus driver fail rate improvement of 82% versus 74% at the beginning of the school year, the great news is that fail rate continues to increase and is currently at 84% as of today. Also, the December bus driver vacancies was at 183 versus 231 at the beginning of the school year. Today, we're actually at 178 vacancies, which is a continued reduction of 53. If we go to the next slide? As noted in the Formative Report, PGCPS's recruitment and marketing efforts were diverse and strong. With the lack of qualified CDL drivers and the training required for the majority of their trainees hired, we recognized that the recruitment period had to be modified and implemented a year-wide and targeted marketing and messaging geared towards individuals that are interested in paid training to become a school bus driver with PGCPS. Our recruitment office, in collaboration with communications, have incorporated an aggressive recruitment strategy, which not only includes various media and radio buys, but also marketing billboard placements, outfront media, which is advertising on buses, mall placements, and paid external social media advertisements. This is an interesting slide because with a continued focus on transparency, there are often questions raised about our bus driver salaries. The next slide represents a bus driver pay comparison and competitive analysis that was completed by a compensation and classification office. This illustrates that PGCPS is very competitive relative to other neighboring LEAs or school systems. More importantly, it reflects that we are above the market at the midpoint and maximum pay table ranges. This illustrates the ability for our employees to have an increased earning potential the longer they remain with PGCPS. We can go to the next slide. Some of our next steps include the process of creating a strategic bus driver staffing plan in partnership with the Office of Strategic Planning and Resource Management and Transportation Services. As to why, while our recruitment efforts have been positively highlighted, the strategic plan will be focused on benchmarks, applicant tracking, building capacity, and a focus on retention via an enhanced work environment and climate and culture survey feedback. I just want to thank Dr. Baldwin, Dr. Coleman, Director Baldwin, and Superintendent House for the continued collaborative efforts.
Thank you so much. This concludes our presentation, and we look forward to taking your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to recognize Board Member Brown.
Thank you, Chair Jackson, and thank you, Dr. Coleman and your team. I really appreciate you all taking the time. I know transportation is not the easiest job, and it is a very forward-facing position, and so I want to make sure that I preface in saying that I appreciate all that you all do. I've been a parent for PGCPS since 2014, and so I know about the Stop Finder app, so I was very shocked when I heard that there were 28,000 additional parents who signed up. Unfortunately- Unfortunately, my experience has not been great with Stop Finder. I will say, on Friday, when the students went to school, there was a no subscriptions available alert that came out every time we tried to see what time the bus. So essentially, it was almost like we were rolling a dice to figure out if the bus was going to come, where it was going to come. Because there's multiple buses that come in our neighborhood, I think I, my kids just ran across the street to take the bus, and they were able to go to school, and they were on time, so that was a good thing. And so I, I think my question is, I'm asking, because we want to ensure transparency, right, with our community, what meant, like, as far as, like, do you know what happened? And how can we prevent these errors? I know it's not always going to be perfect, but what actually happened that it got to an error that we, we couldn't contact anybody, we didn't know what to do? And this is, let me also explain, this has also been a problem prior to you all coming here. Stop Finder has always just kind of been an issue that I've dealt with over, over a number of years, and so, but when I talk about this specific problem, going back to school and, and I understand, like I said, the logistics with the snow days, can you kind of explain what happened and, and what metrics are we going to do moving forward to, to ensure that that doesn't happen? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. To explain what happened, it was actually within our programming in which a service was turned off. And so, once we discovered that service within the system, we were able to activate it and try to send notifications out of the change that we did catch the issue and that we have rectified it from that standpoint. So hopefully, you got a Stop Finder message within, at least this week, that explained the issue.
I did not.
You did not?
Yes, so I, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on that as well.
Absolutely.
The other, I did have one more other question. Dr. Coleman mentioned a emergency weather team. I still believe, honestly, that the school bus is probably the safest way to transport to school. I mean, it's, it's huge, it's yellow, you can't miss it, it got big wheels. If somebody hits it, you know, it, it's very difficult for, as far as a car is concerned. Our drivers certainly go through rigorous training and accountability, but as community members, how, what does that look like as far as being a part of a weather team? Do they have to get up in the morning? Is that something that volunteer, parents or, uh, community members can volunteer for? Because I know a lot of my constituents, they want to know how they can contribute to PGCPS, but they don't know how. And I think this might be an opportunity to see if they could be a part of the emergency weather team.
So one of the things I want to assure them, apparent of, is that we have a diverse team already assembled to support coming to the best possible recommendations for Superintendent House around weather. We're looking at our vendor-managed care for before and after-care programs. We're looking at transportation from all five hundred square miles of our district. We are in communication with the Department of Public Works as well as our community partners, with community leaders from our municipal side. We also have athletics being considered, our building services team, maintenance, so, and many of these, these members are also parents. So there are parents that are actively a part of the conversation each time that we meet, and we actually would ask them, how does, how does it feel for you in your neighborhood with your children? And put your hat on in your official role as, you know, director of or supervisor of, and give us your official spin. So I just want the, to assure the public that we take into account all aspects of the decision with safety being the lead priority.
No, and I, I really appreciate that. I think, I wanted my kids to go back to school, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Board Member Brown.
And, and if I could just add, if, if it's, if it's okay, Board Chair, just going back to the Stop Finder app, we haven't talked about it in detail, but Director Baldwin, as a part of the entire improvement effort with that being one of our five prioritized recommendations, has redeployed staff from the central office into each of the bus lots to help make certain that we are substituting the buses with the proper trip so that the Stop Finder app works more effectively. So that's been an ongoing improvement effort.
Yeah. Dr. Moss?
First of all, thank you all for doing God's work, and we know transportation issues don't have humanity to Prince George's County. It's happening all across the country. But I, I do have a question. It appears that Stop Finder stopped finding children a long time ago, and we've consistently had issues with it. Have, at any point, at any juncture, did we consider a new vendor to, to be able to do this? My granddaddy used to say, if it's not broke, don't fix it. This seems to be broke. And so, how do we actually find a way to fix Stop Finder? The good folks in Westphalia blew me up about this issue with Stop Finder. And my second question is, it appears that it's still taking too long to get, to get to school, although we've changed school start times. Is that working?
Thank you so much. Director Baldwin, can you just speak to the functionality of the Stop Finder app as we talk about the geo-alerts versus just the basic signup? And how we're trying to move to that greater level of functionality? And I'll address the second.
I think what might be helpful on top of that is that if we can provide a, just, just a reflection back of where we started, because there was a lot of conversation before a number of newer board members came on about this. Things have been going much better until, until the, the storm most recently. Much better. The improvements have, have, have really, really come around. So what we'd like to do is maybe develop a small group of those of you that may not have had an opportunity to see kind of where we came from to, to where we are. I think it will be extremely helpful to, to give some insight around Stop Finder and just the whole process as a whole.
I can certainly respect that, Superintendent House.
And the last piece, thank you for that, Superintendent House. The other piece is, when Director Baldwin put up the executive summary that's in the presentation that looks at us from school year October of twenty-three to present, you can see tangible evidence from a third-party independent consulting group that is looking at our data and assessing whether or not we're getting better, staying the same, or getting worse. And there are clear metrics in the numbers that are showing that we are getting better. We're utilizing our buses more effectively with putting more students on without overcrowding. We are creating trips that are maximizing the amount of trips that we can do for each bus. We're reducing the number of routes so that, or trips so that they're becoming more efficient as well.
I, I think we, we've got to make sure if parents actually feel this in some way. So I, I don't know how, if, if we're having this success, how do we actually get parents to actually feel this in some way? But, good. Okay, well, good. I, I trust you all, but the good folks in Westphalia.
Can you turn the mic on and say that? I want to hear that with the mic on.
I said, trust me, it's way better. So yes, thank you for the record.
They told me to trust black women, so that's two of them down there, so I got you.
Board Members Akia?
Thank you so much. I know we said that we could have a separate conversation with new board members. I just want to clarify for all of us here, is Stop Finder something that we own or is Stop Finder a partnership with a vendor? How does that work?
Yeah, it is a partnership with a vendor. It is tied to our routing system. And to what we've said, they, we have had tremendous improvement from where we were last year to this point. And so, there are some steps that need to be taken in order to maximize the use of the app, and I think from that standpoint, we have seen that significant increase. It's technology, though, right? And, and it's as good as what we use. And so, we want to make sure that we push out to our families, to our schools on how to use it, what it takes to be used at maximum capacity. So as part of that, we've made an initiative to go out to our schools and participate in plenty of PTA meetings. We've talked to our PSAs to help with schools and help with parents to sign up, because we need that assistance. It's, it's a collaboration kind of with the synergy component, because we need a verifiable email address in order to invite parents to participate in the app. And then that second part is activating and creating the geo-alerts. That's the big push that's needed to really maximize the, the Stop Finder app.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Thank you so much, Chair Jackson. So I want to start by saying, echoing just the praises to the transportation team. You all have been responsive from the minute that parents have been blowing our emails up, saying, you know, this and that in the beginning of the school year. You all were really responsive, and I think that that is a hard thing to do, and it's definitely gotten better, because we don't have a thousand emails coming in. I do want to say, though, because I made promises to, you know, my constituents that I would speak on their behalf, and, and so I just want to say these things. These are things that came in, whether it was in September or October, that are the stories that we don't always get to hear, but it's not just the numbers, it's the lived experiences of people. And I have a quote here that says, "I understand that it's a big win to go from arriving at school thirty to forty-five minutes late to arriving at school five minutes late." But could you think, but do you think there is any chance to put a bit more pressure on transportation to see students arriving at school before class starts? That was September twenty twenty-four, so some things have improved. I'm at another parent who talked about her son who went to one of the schools on my district. He wants to be an engineer. She said that since he started at the school, he thought he'd be a great fit for the science and, and technology program, but he's missing almost the entire first period every single day because his bus, bus is late, and that how she's frustrated and, you know, it's ridiculous and it's disappointing. And one of the things that she mentioned was some creative solutions. So she said, you know, one of the solutions is a centralized drop-off area or a couple of them. It may not be a solution that fits everyone, but, you know, that might be something that may fit. So I know that, I'm bringing all this up to say that, thank you for the things that you're doing to improve the system. I guess I see this as a bit of like a scientific approach where it's like, you know, you don't, you have a theory, and if it doesn't, if it's not a hundred percent, then you got to go back to the drawing board and see what can I improve to get it better? And I'm seeing that, you know, some of the feedback is, how can we continue to improve some of the kinks? And I'm hoping that we're not just moving forward, but that we're also looking back and saying, these things may not be working. Can we rethink how we're approaching it? So I'm just curious if you could speak to any of the creative solutions that you might be thinking about?
Yes, thank you so much, Board Member Briggs, and, and I just want to make certain, we appreciate the acknowledgement of progress, but we're certainly not satisfied, right? We have a lot of work to do. Superintendent House has acknowledged this, as, as transportation has remained one of his areas of focus with respect to the budget. There are two pillars when we think about transportation. One is gaining operational efficiency, and the second is staffing. We're very clear that we still have nearly two hundred open routes every single day. A route is made up of six trips, so those are staff members that have to loop back after they complete their normal run and pick up students, and that pushes the efficiency down for the entire system. So we have to close both the efficiency gaps that we have, as well as the staffing gaps that we have, to make our system run effectively.
And I think that will, as we, as we bring those of you that would love to learn a little bit more about kind of where we started and look at some of the data from the beginning, that's one of the things that will jump off the page from you, still behind, you know, a hundred and eighty drivers. So as we approach budget season, I, I urge the board to, to think through kind of what that looks like. And, and knowing that even though our wages are, are in a place where they're competitive, we've got to do more to ensure that our, and that we'll be thinking through other strategies. We've, you know, talked about possibility of hubs and a little bit of everything, but, but we'll be thinking through all of those strategies, but in order to truly improve the, and get to a place where we are comfortable across the board, we will have to invest, in my opinion, more.
Okay. Well, I want to say thank you for the, for the comments, and really quickly, I just want to say, I do want to echo that I think it's important that we're thinking about creative solutions. We can't solve the teacher shortage issue by wishing that there are more teachers. We can't solve the, the bus driver issue by wishing there are more, more bus drivers. We have to be creative and work around the issues we have.
And I agree, we're doing some of that. Just one example would be, we created last year the non-CDL driver position. That didn't exist before last year. So if we couldn't find CDL drivers, we said, well, let's hire drivers, let's create a classification and hire people who have a basic driver's license, and we can transport children. So we, we bought the vans so that they, they could utilize those, and we picked out those trips that were specialized, that would underutilize a full bus, and we placed those students on those vans. We've also used contractor support to help also provide additional relief from our bus drivers, and so we're looking at different multimodal ways to provide more access for our students.
Board Member Walker?
Yes, thank you so much. Again, kudos to the Transportation Department and Dr. Coleman and overall operations. You know, thanks, Vice Chair Briggs, for talking about the metric as far as the reduction in not only emails, but text messages, door knocks, all of the things. So we appreciate our constituents continuing to write to us, but one thing that I am continuing to get outside of the, just for your consideration, I don't need an answer tonight, just, my goal is to have you think through this so that we can steadily improve, is, one, is getting there right on time for the bell start, right? We're getting to school, which is great, but just getting there a little bit earlier. So taking a look at those routes, I do recognize that they're continuously being improved. I know my son's route has changed multiple times, either add routes or stop route, stop bus stop, so thank you for that, but just looking at that continuously. And then the other one is the special needs population for those specific buses, because I am getting a number of calls where those are popping up, either the access to where it is or shifted a little bit, and it's not, the, the parents aren't able to get their student to that exact new bus stop. So if we could just take a look at our special needs population specifically around that and optimize that, I think that that would be amazing and bring us to where we ultimately want to be for operations and transportation. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Endival?
To echo everyone else, thank you for this presentation. I, I did have a question about, so, so I'm looking at the, at the presentation, I see there's a note that speaking to the mean trip duration and stating that it's, it's essentially remaining comparable, so, so sixty-eight minutes to sixty-two minutes from last year. And a lot of people here are obviously speaking to the delays, and, you know, I'm hearing this a lot, not only from constituents, but also from friends. I'm, you know, lucky enough to live rather close to my son's school, and so while we don't, you know, experience extreme delays, you know, I understand what it feels like to wonder where your child is, right? And what I've had to do is put an AirTag in my child's book bag, because even though I'm extremely close to the school, the app is not, Stop Finder app is not showing me accurately when my child has left. And that's, again, we, we're just five minutes down the road. But I, I'm asking about this, wondering if in the, the data that we're tracking, are we actually tracking progress around school arrival times and delays? I'd be curious to see year over year, if tho, if those numbers are going down as we're talking about the improvements that we're seeing and using Stop Finder or, you know, just more broadly, the, the, the progress that we're seeing with transportation and our bus routes? Are we tracking that data, and is that something that you could share?
So, go ahead, Nora. Yes, we are tracking that data. We are working with our consultant, Formative, to create a, a data dashboard so that it has all of our key indicators so that we can monitor and our trends and look at that. So right now, we are fine-tuning the data. We're having to clean it up because it is something new, and between the vendor and application and our current reality, where we don't have enough drivers and we're having to double up, excuse the system, and so we have to scrub that data to make sure that we can provide the most accurate. And, and what's been showing thus far is, is an improvement. It's not where, anywhere we want to be right now, but it is an improvement, and I feel like, keep working, adding those components of operations and staffing to it, we can get to that point. And so, soon, we'll be able to share with you this data and, and, and let you see the trends that we are, are seeing.
Thank you. This will conclude our transportation audit. Thank you. Update. Move, yeah, we can give them a round of applause. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes. Moving on to fifteen point two, Special Education, overview of the IEP process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to invite back to the microphone our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Judy White, to provide an update in reference to the IEP process and, and special education. Dr. White?
Thank you so much for that. Now, the good news is that I'm not going to do all eighty-nine slides. Yes, because I want to get you out of here. We're going to cover the IEP process. However, I wanted to make sure that we provided a lot of information for you to look at. When you look at this next slide, Charles, I think I need help with fir, there we go. Thank you. When you look at this slide, this is what's in the entire presentation. Today, we're going to talk about the IEP process, but we wanted to provide you with some context of who we serve. We wanted to make sure that you have information for compliance and monitoring. So how are we audited? How do we monitor what takes place in the district? How many complaints do we have that go to the state? What do we have to do when that happens? What does our dashboard look like? I've also provided you with collaborative partnership information. You heard one of our parents actually shared tonight that last year she came and they had recommendations for us. had recommendations for us. Many of the things she talked about were things that we did in partnership and, and approved, improved. Additionally, resources and activities for our families, like the amount of professional development we're doing, because I always like bringing gifts, you will, you will find that I bring gifts to you all. What you have before you, you don't have to open it now, but many of the links that we put inside, I just wanted to make sure you had a copy. The biggest thing, our strategic plan is in here, but we created a toolkit just for you. So we have one for our families that's way thicker than this, but we wanted you to have the quickest. The other thing I'll point out, and then we'll get started, is just how do we communicate with our families? A QR code if parents come to you and they need help to the family support center to email address. So these, these are resources for you, that links are also in the presentation. Tonight, I have the honor of sitting with Trinell Bowman, she's our Associate Superintendent for Special Education. You will see us go through different slides throughout the presentation to make sure that we cover the IEP process and to make sure we talk about ways that you can have and advocate for your families if they reach out to your, your constituents, to get them to us so that we can help solve their problems. So I will turn it over to you on who we serve.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Yep. So I wanted to start by sharing with you our demographic data as of October first, twenty twenty-three. The October first enrollment data is always our official count of data for the school district. We served sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-eight students across the district. We are a birth-to-age-twenty-one state in Maryland, so you can see how that breaks down through birth to five, elementary, middle, and high school. You also have on the left-hand side of your folder what we call a special education program location chart. We do provide a variety of services or specific specialized programs across the district. So again, on your left-hand side, you do have a special education program location chart. It provides you with information across the district where our early childhood specialized programs are, our social, emotional, academic development programs, autism extensions, autism programs, our regional special education programs, our comprehensive special education programs. We also have deaf and hard of hearing, a parent-infant program, and our community reference instruction program. So I wanted to make sure that you have that information for your reference. The next piece we're going to get into is the IEP process, and I'm just going to provide you with a high-level overview.
And before she goes, I just want to stop really quick just to make a note. I know autism, a lot of our families are asking about autism. What we also have, and we'll provide it to you, I don't think we have it in the folder, is the district that overlays our programs so that you can see that we have autism programs all over the district. And in that way, you'll be able to see what boundary serves each program, and you'll be able to see which programs based on this list is in your district. I know sometimes parents think, oh, we only have one or two, the way we have specialty programs, that is not the case with autism. They are all over the district, and as we have more students that come in to our system, we make sure that we look for schools where we have seats. Another thing just to note is that our numbers for autism trend have gone up. So in twenty, slide eight, I just want to just show this really quick. So when you look here, in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, look at the number of autism students we had, sixteen hundred roughly, look at twenty-four, twenty-five. If you look at twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, look at the number of autism programs we had then, and if you look down that row, look at where we are now. If you look at just from twenty twenty, look where we are now. So I just wanted to give that context because I know many of you get a lot of questions about autism. Now, this doesn't even mean the autism students that are in our comprehensive schools. This is simply the autism students that are in our specialty, special programs for autism.
All right. So when we look at special education, there's two laws that govern what we do in Maryland. First, we have our federal regulation, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and then we have our Code of Maryland Regulations. Maryland is very unique in that there are several regulations that we have in Maryland that govern special education process that you will not find in other states. You also may find that in Maryland, we start certain services at an earlier age. So for example, in Maryland, our secondary transition services, if you look at IDEA, those services start at age sixteen, where a student must have a transition plan, but in Maryland, they start at fourteen. So that's just an example of some shifts that we have in our Code of Maryland Regulations that you will not find in IDEA. This just provides you with a flow chart of our special education process. So it always starts with a referral, and a referral can be made by a parent or guardian. It can also be made by a staff member. For students who are in our infants and toddlers program, a referral may even come in from the pediatrician. So referrals come in a variety of ways, particularly based on the age of the child. When we look at the referral, we have to then determine if we have to conduct an evaluation based on the referral. So if the referral comes in that they suspect that a student has a disability, we look at that information. There may be outside assessments that the student or the family has already gone through that we can actually use. So we have this evaluation process that we look at. Also during the evaluation process, we're determining if we need additional assessments. So do we need a psychological? Do we need an educational assessment? Does a student have fine motor difficulties that may call for an occupational therapy assessment? So we look at all that during that evaluation process. Then we determine if the child is eligible. We have fourteen different disability categories around eligibility. We're really looking at educational impact. So just because a student has autism does not mean that they may require an IEP. So it's really about educational impact that requires specialized services for us to also implement specially-designed instruction, such as accommodations, simply aids and services, et cetera. Each year, we do also have to look at other things, part of the annual review process, which I'll get into. If the student is found eligible, again, under those fourteen different disability categories, we then have to develop an IEP for that student. We also have to get consent to implement the first IEP. So a parent actually has to physically sign for services to implement the initial IEP. We then implement that IEP, and then we progress monitor the IEP. I want you to know that each quarter, just as we give report cards, in addition to giving report cards if a student has an IEP, we also have to give an IEP progress report that gives parents information around the progress that their child is making around IEP goals. And then every single year, we have to have what we call an annual review meeting, where we actually look at the IEP and services and determine if any adjustments for goals, related services, accommodations, et cetera, are needed. The other important piece around the annual review is that we have to determine every single child, so you saw the number earlier, sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-eight students with IEPs, every year, we have to determine if they qualify for extended school year services. Those are services that happen as part of our summer school program in the district, and so every student has to be reviewed. And then once a student turns fourteen, we then have to develop a transition plan to talk about post-secondary goals and outcomes. Is a student going to college? Is a student going through a CTE pathway, et cetera? There are a lot of timelines associated with special education processes. This is a flow chart that gives you all of the various timelines we are required to follow. Remember, some of these, most of the timelines are under IDEA, but some of them are under the State of Maryland Code of Regulations. We have a very active family advocacy in the state of Maryland, and years ago, they advocated for what we call the Maryland Five-Day Rule. We are the only state that has a five-day rule. The five-day rule means five business days before an IEP meeting is held, we must provide the parent with a copy of data, assessment reports, anything that we're going to review with the parent, we have to provide that to them five days before an IEP meeting. After the IEP meeting is held, any updates to the IEP, any amendments to assessment reports, et cetera, we also have to provide that five days after the IEP meeting. That also includes what we call a prior written notice, which is basically the meeting minutes of what happened, what decisions were made, what actions were proposed, what actions were rejected, and what any next-ups are concerning the student. Also highlighted here is that we do have to provide notification for an IEP meeting ten days before, ten calendar, calendar days. We do have to make sure that the families are aware of a meeting taking place. There are provisions to waive the ten-day notice if the parent does give us consent. In Maryland, again, this is another Maryland Code of, Maryland Regulations that you won't find in IDEA, there are certain parameters that we have around consent that is beyond the initial implementation of services. So for example, if a student is going to be on an alternate educational framework, parents must give consent as part of the IEP process. If we're going to use seclusion at our non-public schools, or restraint in our non-public and public schools, a parent has to give consent for that to be implemented as part of a behavior intervention plan. Those are just two examples that I can give you that are beyond the traditional IDEA regulations. We also have thirty days to convene a meeting if we're looking at suspected disability for eligibility. We also have to make sure that we translate IEPs into our highest languages in Prince George's County. So this is another Maryland regulation you won't find in IDEA. If one percent of our population is reflected as English learners in our district, we have to translate upon parent request the IEP and prior written notice. In our district, those two languages are Spanish and French, and we look at that data every year. If a third language emerges, as one percent of our population, we will be also translating those documents upon parent request. When we look at the calendar timeline from consent, again, a parent must give consent for assessments. It is a ninety-day window to, through that development of the IEP. And then every three years, we have to look at continued eligibility. Does this child continue to qualify for special education services? That has to be done a minimum of every three years for continued eligibility. It does not necessarily mean that we assess a student at that three-year mark, but we do have to do that evaluation. Sometimes IEP teams may request an evaluation to be done yearly and not at the three-year mark, but at minimum, we have to do it every three years. And then again, yearly, we have to determine eligibility for extended school year services.
And then what I just want to point out here, you see the timeline, when, later on in the presentation, when you're reviewing it on your own, you'll notice for any findings that we may have. It could be that we missed anything in here. It could be something simple that we didn't do in five days, we did it in six. So just keep that in mind with the tight timeline.
And again, the referral process, I did highlight this, we are obligated, if we suspect that a child has a disability, to convene an IEP meeting and have that discussion. So keep in mind, a staff member or parent and guard, or guardian can refer to the IEP team if they suspect that a child has a disability. The other important piece around our referral process is that a student could be going through our responsive intervention or multi-tiered systems of support, and also going through the eligibility process for special ed. And so those systems are not synonymous with one another, but students could be going through them at the same time. Again, once the request has been received, an IEP meeting will be scheduled to discuss the concerns and any pertinent information. At times, we are able to qualify the student without doing our own assessments, particularly if, again, students have outside assessments. So we take that all into account.
So we just want to quickly, that's, that is the IEP process, these additional slides here, these are just sections that are in the IEP. We wanted you to be aware, if you look, so every time we do an IEP, the teachers must complete every last one of those sections. Additionally, dismissal from special ed, quickly, just talk about that part.
So I just want everyone to know that if a parent or the IEP team believes a student has made progress and no longer requires special ed services, we must do an evaluation before we dismiss them from special education services. And so that just is giving you a little bit of information about that, and then we document that decision as part of the process. We did provide you with a link, so you can go on our YouTube channel and watch a deeper dive of the IEP process to get more information.
All right, here, we know this is what you really want to know. When your constituents are emailing you and they want to know how to resolve, these are the steps that we need you to help them with. Did they contact their case manager? Every single student has a case manager at their school. If that didn't work, did they communicate with the principal? So we just wanted you to have that there. We've also provided, and it's in your folder, a resolution contact list. Here are ways that we resolve disagreements formally. We can, we have mediation, we have due process, and/or they can go to the state. It is a parent's right to go to the state, we don't stop them from doing so. Myths.
So these are just a couple of myths and facts that we wanted to share with you that we often hear. One is around the school district is in charge of the student's placement and making those decisions. All decisions that govern a student's placement in terms of where the IEP is going to be implemented must be made through the IEP team process. Sometimes we often get or hear that a five-oh-plan, five-oh-four plan is the same as an IEP. And we want you to know that under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, it does apply to looking at students who may have a substantial limit of a major life function and only require accommodations. With special education and IEPs, it really looks at specially-designed instruction and additional services that the IEP, that the five-oh-four may not be able to provide. The other big piece is that a student who is provided with special education services must receive comp services or compensatory education services if there is a vacancy, for example. Not all students may qualify for compensatory services if there are missed services. We have a very robust data analysis process that we follow, that we look at. And again, if the student has made progress in spite of a vacancy, as an example, they may not be educationally impacted. And just to give you a glimpse of percentages, when we went through COVID, every single child in the district had to be reviewed with an IEP, and only about twenty percent of them qualify for comp services. And then the last myth is if a student has an IEP, all issues should be resolved by the IEP team or the Department of Special Education. And we want to make it clear that not all issue, all issues that may emerge with a student with an IEP requires the Department of Special Education to support or requires the Family Support Center. For example, if there's issues around grading, or extracurricular activities, or the interaction with a staff member and a student, those really should be addressed and handled at the school level, rather than through the IEP or Department of Special Education.
All these wonderful things, I know you all are going to ask me questions about later on, because you're going to have a chance to review and learn. But here, I just wanted to point out again, because we appreciate all that you do for us, and we want you to understand, this was built solely for you. This was something that we did this year to make sure that you all had tools to understand. We made it really simplistic as we could to just give you support. Here, we just want to talk about, so how can you support families, right? And we talked about this earlier, encourage them to reach out to their case manager. If the school isn't responsive, every, every school has an area office. We have the Family Support Center, we've provided you with that information, and you all know a way to get in touch with me if all else fails. There is a way to get to me, and I will ensure it gets to the right office. Here, it's in your folder, is the QR code for our families. This is posted, here's the number to the Family Support Center. Just a note about the Family Support Center, Maryland MSD makes sure that every single LEA in Maryland has one. Prince George's County is the only one that puts three additional staff to our Family Support Center. And with that, that wraps us up about the IEP process.
Thank you for your presentation. Board members, before we start taking questions, I want us to be cognizant of the time, and we will not be doing two rounds. So the time that's allotted, the two, what is it, two minutes, two and a half minutes, will be the time to ask the question and for the rebuttal. So thank you. So the first person I want to recognize is number seven, and that is Board Member Brown.
Yes, thank you. So I saw, I did go over this, the slides. Two slides, thirty-five and thirty-six, discuss violations that were trending. Can you kind of talk about if it was operational, if it was a training, like what areas of opportunity do we have to, I guess, limit those violations?
So what I can share with you is we do have a top five that we share with principals in terms of as we look at our complaints. I'm happy to share that information with you in terms of our top five violations. We do have what we call procedural and substantive violations. Procedural things like the five-day rule, as Dr. White alluded to earlier. We might, we probably did not meet a specific timeline. And then we have substantive violations where we may have a vacancy for a special education teacher, and that might have caused us to have to have an IEP meeting for educational impact. But I can definitely provide you with our trend data. We do share that each year with our principals and really help them focus on what is the issue, how do I plan for this issue, how do I implement this issue, and how do I monitor it? So I'll be happy to share that presentation with you so that you can see what our trend data looks like.
Ms. Brown? Okay, thank you. Next, I have Board Member Boozerstrata.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just, I wanted to understand better why Section 504 services are under- I just wanted to understand better why Section 504 services are under Department of Student Services and not Special Education Department, because I keep running into a circle of that, and I, and honestly, I keep forgetting. And so, can you just give us clarity about why that is and the organizational chart and supervisory structure? Thank you.
I would say, since I've been in this district off and on for 28 years, they've always been under Department of Student Services. If you, even if you look at the state level, they are actually operating under the Division of like Family Support Services. And so, I probably couldn't, I'm probably not the best person to articulate why they're sitting under Student Services. I will say, district-wide, it's pretty much an even split. In some districts, they are under Department of Special Education, and in some districts, they are under the Department of Student Services. And that's pretty, an even split even throughout the country, I would say. Historically, when I came to the district, it was that way. The other thing I would add to it, Chief Davis, I know, may want to add to it, is that the professional school counselors are kind of like the case manager of the 504, which could be another reason why, as a district, they're under Student Services, because it's the professional school counselor who does serve as the 504 coordinator at every single school. So, that's another bit of information I could share.
Yeah, that's helpful, and I think it's just kind of holding on to that path, that organizational pathway when it would seem so logical that it would be under the Special Education Division completely.
And there are a lot of things that cross both. And so, our Associate Superintendent Elizabeth Faison and Trinell work hand in hand, because it's many things coming from this state that are split but together.
That's helpful, thank you. That's my only question tonight.
Thank you. Board Member Walker.
Thank you so much. Awesome presentation, as usual, ladies. First question, I have two questions, and we're going to knock it out in two and a half minutes, okay? The first is around the measurement of compliance, and the second piece is around monitoring our educators. So, the first one is, for the measurement of compliance, what is the review process in the school, at the school and district level to ensure that we are following the processes and ensuring that our IEP process meets the federal standards, okay? So, that's the first one around measurement of compliance. And the second question that I have for you, if you get to it, if not, you can email me, because the first one's really important, is around special educators. I get a couple of questions around, you know, these special educators, they might not be there, they might have left, and then, the scholars go to general population for the general teachers. And so, I was just wondering if we kept an eye on that? And then, especially as we move into budget season, is there anything that we should look at for the need for our special educators if they're lacking? And if they're, if our scholars are really going into general population, if they need to be specialized?
So, I'll take, I'll answer the first one. The quickest answer I would give you is Prince George's County, unlike most districts, created our own data dashboard that in a moment, we can go in like this and look at all of our compliance data. We also, as a system, through our Chief Zuckerman, are able to send out an email every single week that goes at every school for every IEP that's out of compliance, right? And so, we're able to quickly say, as soon as I see it, I'm like, how are we helping this school? And it allows us to know. The other thing I will say is that we have an SEIS assigned to every single school. So, the average caseload in our CSI schools is probably about eight, and everywhere else is probably about 12. And they're meeting with those principals. They keep Google Docs, rolling agendas, where we can go in at a moment's notice and look up a kid's case, we can look up the conversation. But the data dashboard, you all have sample in your folder of the type of reports that we keep. And then, we also provided you with just an example of our January Special Ed Accountability Checklist, just so that you can take a look at to see what some of the items are that are included on that. And then, I think your second question was just around, how do we support? So, we always make the best decision as it relates to program placement, which is through the IEP team process. There may be support plans that are being implemented that may look very different because of our vacancies, but we continue to look at that and to really be able to think about how we can best support our students in spite of the vacancies. And we've leveraged, if you go to one of the last PowerPoint slides, it talks about our challenges. I think, I believe it's Slide 88, it does give you some of the things that we've done to really look at our challenges and how we overcome that, which will give you, I think, some information of the things that we have tried.
Thank you.
As it relates to that.
Thank you. All right, so next, I have Dr. Moss, followed by Dr. Anfield, followed by Board Member Shakia.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say, as complimentary as you all were of the Transportation Department, I want to be of that, of the Special Education Department. These good folks spent their Christmas walking me through all of my questions and reeling me in where I was wrong, and I so, I so much so appreciate them for their work. But I, there was one thing that you all did not highlight that I think is super important. Many of the issues that we face with regard to special education are really around customer service. And I'd like for you all to talk a little bit about the process that you have to ensure that we have better customer service and parent relationships. What we heard in public comment today was really parents not having a good experience, not issues of compliance. And you've done some good work to rectify this. So, in the balance of my time, I hope you all can do that.
So, a quick answer to that is, number one, we have the Family Support Center. We do professional development for all of them. With Dr. Davis, we're really working at the school level is, if you look at all the complaints, even the ones that you get into your emails, it's, I would say, 90% don't even talk about the education experience. It's about how they were talked to. So, one of the things, based on actually Parent Smith that's in the audience, is do we survey parents? So, at the end of every single IEP meeting, they're able to take a survey. Out of over 600 parents that have filled out that survey with the highest rank being a five, we're averaging a 4.5. When I get that every other week and I look at it, where I see ones, I look at that school, and I go down and I look at that school to see if I see other ones or twos. And what we're seeing are isolated incidents. But it allows us then to work with school teams to find out how we can support and how we can work collaboratively with those families. That's a quick answer of, of an example of how we're supporting our families.
And I'd like just to add, as mentioned earlier, we have a few different focus areas that, that we're really pushing in our principals' meeting is on top of math and literacy, as well as attendance, building capacity through coaching and feedback, as I indicated. But to really speak to what you're talking about, there is a major focus this year on strengthening school culture and climate. And this is a part of what customer service is. So, it's a concerted effort throughout the district with every principal, with every principal meeting that we're working on, is to improve that experience that parents have coming into our buildings.
Dr. Anfield.
Yes, thank you so much for this. I have a specific question about a slide that I know that you did not present on tonight. So, it's Slide 11 on the number of students who exited special education, that trend data, so ages 14 to 21, while a small percentage, looks like about 12% for the 2023 count. I'm curious about this year, or in 2023, the increase in the number of students who dropped out. So, with that being their exit reason, where it's looking like from 2019 until then, we were declining. I'm wondering if you can shed any light on anything that you've learned about that increase from last year, with that being an exit reason?
And so, I, as part of our exit data, when we look at the students who have dropped out, we do see that there is an increase in the ninth grade year, particularly, and that trends with our general ed students who actually drop out in ninth grade. And so, we are building some strategies around looking at that particular population. We also see with our special ed data that our multilingual learner population definitely are ones that we are really concerned about. And part of that is the need, once they get to a certain age, to be able to help the family and work. And so, we do see that particular population is one that we definitely want to focus on, that where we see a higher dropout rate. And we do have an improvement plan that really focuses on that, that I can share.
Okay, so are you saying that you believe that one of the contributing factors for the increase from 2022 to 2023 is our?
So, we are increasing just as a district with our multilingual population.
So, that switches?
Yes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I want to echo Board Member Moss's, excuse me, Dr. Moss's, complimentary statements about the Special Education Department. I really appreciate you all answering questions and making sure we are understood. Several of my questions have been answered. My only, I guess, question request for things like, this is Slide 11 that Dr. Anfield just referenced, can we get percentages as well so we can better compare how things are changing year to year? And also, on that question, are we able to get a comparison for the percentages of students in the ninth grade overall that are dropping out as well as our, excuse me, as well as our, all of the populations that you're, you are referencing specifically? Just so that we can compare them and better be able to respond to constituents when they have questions.
Thank you, please, Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Chair Jackson. So, I want to echo the thanks to you all on the presentation for special education. And I also wanted to turn just attention to, I would think it was Slide 37, and it talked about violations and legal fees. And I think one of the, one of my colleagues brought up that piece. And so, I wanted to just put three questions on the record that are already included in our tracker that is concerning the budget, that I'm pretty sure, Dr. White, you may have saw earlier today. So, the question was, can you provide details on PGCPS's expenditures to contract attorneys for school year 23, 24? Can you provide details of PGCPS's expenditures on PGCPS's attorneys? Sorry, my computer just did something weird. And staff and appeals litigation for school year 23, 24? And can you provide details of the total settlement cost incurred in school year 23 and school year 24? And really, just because I want to know more about how that may be disproportionately impacting families that have to go through litigation and legal processes and things like that.
Well, when we answer those questions, you'll receive that back from Chief Howe.
Thank you. Seeing as there's no more lights, we'll move on to the next section. I want to recognize Superintendent House.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you noted, Items 15.1 and through 15.4 require board approval with proclamations really commemorating the observation of African-American, African-American Read-In Month, Observation of National African-American History Month, Observation of Career and Technology Education Month, Observation of African-American Read-In Month, also during the month of February 2025, the approval of the 2025, 26 calendar as well. So, at this time, I will read off each, well, at this time, I'll turn it back over you for approval.
Thank you. Board members, would you like to pull any of these items for discussion under General Orders? Pulling an item does not denote a no, it indicates a desire to discuss further. If there are no objections, the consenting to Items 15.1 through 15.4 will be adopted. There is no unfinished business. Moving to General Orders. There is no General Order. And then, yeah, new business. Lolita, I know you want it. I think we're going to do it under new business, yeah. Okay, cool. So, new business. Are there any questions about the February 27th meeting? This is under new business? All right. Recognize Board Member Walker.
You asked if there were any questions about the February? Yes, I have, I don't know if it's about the February. Oh, yes, I do, yeah, yeah.
Location.
Thank you, yes, I did. I was hoping that you could talk to us a little bit about, so, I recall in our last meeting that the board voted favorably to have meetings at the Council Building. As we talked about that, the original request was for January, February, and March with the strategic view to have them there long-term. And the reason that January, February, and March came up was because there were questions around the feasibility and doing things on data as far as what the financial and logistical feasibility was. And at that time, Superintendent House said, hey, let us take a look at this and see what it's going to cost us, et cetera. So, I recognize now that we, we didn't have it in January, understand, because we were still looking at the feasibility, at least that's what I understood. And so, I was just hoping you could help me with how the decision is made to move there for February and March without the data coming back? And then, maybe if you, you might already have that data there, but if, in fact, we're going there, which it does seem like it, and I'll be there as well for February and March, can you just help me with what the strategic plan is, what the long-term plan is, so we can recognize the value add of going there for February and March? Thank you so much, and what the impact is financially and logistically.
Thank you for that question. The board chair recognizes, Revell, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson. Well, while, of course, I cannot speak to the strategic goals of shifting to the Wayne Curry Building, what I can share is what staff did in investigation and working with members of Superintendent House's team, Dr. Zuckerman, Chief Boyd, in seeing if the pilot was feasible. And so, we did tour, we did a tour of the Wayne Curry Building. We have had back, I won't say backdoor, but backroom conversations about if the tech will work and those sorts of things. And what we have determined is that there is nothing at this point that's stopping us from doing the three, three-meeting pilot. What has been abundantly clear to, to me as well is that that is for the three-meeting pilot. Our counterpart at the Wayne Curry Building said that she is allowing us to use that room for free, because as we have learned with their tech and their security, they will have to pay their staff. They're not charging us for that for the pilot. That will change if it's something long-term. So, we don't have the exact numbers of the long-term impact, but we have determined that the, it is feasible to do the pilot. And I think that's what I took away as the ask from the last meeting.
Let me re, thank you so much. Can I re, come back to that? Because that didn't quite answer the question that I had. I could go to a second one or something. Okay, thank you for that, and I really do appreciate that perspective from the meeting last time. The specific question that I'm asking to you, Chair, and Revell, you might be able to help with this, is if we don't know the financial impact, I recognize that the board voted favorably, and I'm in favor because the board voted favorably, so don't misunderstand. What I'm looking for is, if we're moving there for February and March, help me understand, where do you see our vision long-term? Because we're doing this for a reason. We're not just going somewhere for two, for two meetings and then coming back. We have to have a strategic vision on where it is that we want to go and for the reason. Now, what it was brought to us was, it'll be better for our constituents to get there because it's better for transportation. That's not true for District 9, and I'm not sure the feasibility for that for other districts because the data wasn't there. So, I'm in for where we go as a board. We are one voice, and I'll be there for the next two or three months wherever we're going. I'm just looking for what is the strategic vision for where it is we're going? Are we moving there longer term? Is that the goal? That we're not going to leverage this building, but to leverage that building? Is that where you want to go? And if that is the case, then please help me with what the data is that supports us doing that work. That's really what the question is. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I appreciate the question, but I want to make sure that we're careful of who look, I guess, as a board chair, my duty is to carry out the will of the board. The board voted to move or to do a pilot for three meetings at the Wayne Curry Building. So, I was tasked with seeing the logistics and the feasibility from a financial standpoint. As far as like the strategic vision, when the motion was being made, I didn't make that motion, so I don't have the vision of what was behind it. I guess I'm left with the same ability to make the assumption that the pilot, which most pilots is to kind of test to see if, I guess, if it was more amenable, or was it, you know, better for constituents to get to a more centrally-located venue? Would it be more, you know, I think that's pretty much what the pilot was for. But as far as like the strategic vision overall, I think that after the pilot is done, we could have data, and then, I think we can go in whatever direction we see fit after we collect data from the pilot. But yeah, so, as far as the strategic vision for moving this operation, it was the will of the board, so I just carried it out. Thank you. For, what's 13? I think it was Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Thank you so much. So, I mean, I'm still back at the Open Meetings Act question, and I need Mr. Swift involved here, because as a board member, my constituents expect me to have a set of data before I vote. So, this came up as from a, now a resigned board member who brought it up on the floor during new business, didn't hand out any data, didn't provide us with anything before we voted, made an argument that it was better for constituent access through public transportation, which, which I looked up a bunch of routes, it'll take two hours from the, you know, from Lewis Dell Elementary is the middle of my district. Lewisdale Elementary is the middle of my district, it'll take you two hours to get there. There's no bus to go home at 10:13. So that argument didn't work. So, sure, it'll save me 20 minutes of driving, but I don't think it changes, you know, the, that's not the reason. And then I suggested, well, if we want more participation, why don't we have video testimony so you don't have to drive to SASS or yay for the, for the constituents in District 3, right? More access for parents. But there's no argument right now about why to be in that building based on the original. But I also think it's an Open Meetings Act violation. So, Mr. Swift, when a board member, Mr. Swift?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swift, when, when?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swift may ask a parliamentarian question, and it is my, I have my time.
One moment, one moment. We can pause it. You got one minute left.
I do, because other board members had this information. It was clear that not all board members were given the information. I would like, I would like Mr. Swift to tell us about the Open Meetings Act.
I understand, I understand, okay. Mr. Swift, can you speak to the OMA violation or possible OMA violation?
I'm not sure what the question is. Not sure.
So during the last board meeting?
Not sure what your question is.
During the last board meeting under new business, a board member brought forward a motion with no data, you know, as board members, I think most people know we have at least a document that gives us data before a vote, so we're informed. And the vote went through under new business. And I, I think it's, you know, then we were told we would have information by tonight, which we were not, we've received no documentation as of tonight, which we were told we would.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
And so is this an Open Meetings Act violation?
I've got a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Answer his point.
When I, when I raise a point of order, it actually stands over whatever conversation is actually happening. I'm curious if in this moment, we are asking our parliamentarian to relegate a vote that has already happened by this body in our previous meeting, and if that is in order and consistent with parliamentary procedure? I would ask that the parliamentarian address that issue because it seems that we're relegating the decision that this board made, and may I, might I add, a majority of this board actually made. And so it would need to be overturned with another motion. So could you speak, if this board is in order to relegate a decision that's already been made? Particularly in new business, where I don't believe our policy provides for us to actually move on an item that was not moved for, before the meeting agenda was set, which runs contrary to the argument that's being made around Open Meetings Act. So could you speak to that, Mr. Parliamentarian?
The answer to the one question about relegating, I have no authority whatsoever before any board client, so I, no, I don't relegate any votes. I'm not sure what the other board member was getting at with the explanation, but my point is what the chairman said in that, which was correct. There was a motion, it was discussed, and it was voted, at least six in the affirmative. Since then, pilot information, our information has been obtained by Mr. Fitzpatrick to run a pilot. And basically, that's the way it stands. Another member, excuse me, one minute.
So I have 54 seconds.
Probably not, but we, I'm going to be courteous because you spoke way more of your time, but go for it, go for it, go for it.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
My, I was.
I don't want to skip too much, go, go for it.
I make a motion to rescind the motion to, to leave our chambers and go to the county council chambers.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, a motion was made, and there was no second, should we proceed with the remainder of the agenda?
Don't need.
We don't need a second in this group because of the small group. We just vote. But it will have to take seven votes in order for this to push in the pass. So, Ms. Barton? Oh, discussion, excuse me, first discussion? Okay, so is, first, Jamal Jongo?
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question, I, I just want to clarify, so, I think the main point that I've been hearing is if we move to the Wayne Currie Building, are we violating the Open Meetings Act? Are we violating the Open Meetings Act? Can anybody answer that question? Is it a yes or a no?
He said no.
No, okay. Then I wanted to ask, okay, um, I'm, I, the next thing I heard was about data, making sure that, well, the first, the, since we, since in December, when we had, the one motion came to the table, it wasn't, we didn't have no relative of data to kind of substantiate the, the motion. I do see us now having that pilot, this three-month pilot, being able to collect the data that we need so that we're able to come back after those two, three months and actually, you know, make a decision on whether we want to move headquarters.
Huh? No, 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 what's that?
Oh, yeah, whether we want to move headquarters to see if it's, you know, if it's easier for, I feel like it's based off of our participation. Because if we look at, let's say, this board meeting, December and November's board, board meetings, we do have a log of every single person that comes into the SASS or building for a board meeting. And in the next three months, we'll now have a log of the people that come to a Wayne Currie Building for the Prince George's Board of Education meeting, and then we'll be able to see that, I feel like that's a sense of data that we're, I think that I hear Board Member Boozer Struthers and Board Member Walker kind of talk about. I feel like that's the only way we'll really see the benefit of having, having our location moved. But that was just really, I think that could really, we could, I feel like it's a good idea, we just got to see how it works so that we can know if we want to really, truly start exploring options for our permanent location.
Mr. Chairman, I have an additional point of order for the parliamentarian. Would it not be true that the individual who makes a motion to rescind it would need to have been in the prevailing side? And in this particular vote, the record would reflect that the gentlelady who raised this motion was actually not part of the prevailing side on the last vote. So when you rescind a vote, I believe it's true that you would have needed to have been on the prevailing side to be able to make that motion for rescension. That's my point of order.
Point of order, please don't call me gentlelady.
Yeah, excuse me. Excuse me. First, direct questions to the president, to the chair, and if he wants me to talk, he'll tell me to talk.
Absolutely.
Don't, don't direct it to me. The motion to reconsider a vote requires that the member voted on the prevailing side. The motion to rescind does not.
Thank you, Mr. Swift. So I'll recognize, it was number seven, is that Board Member Brown? Yes.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. I think this question is going to be pointing to Revell. As far as regarding closed sessions, did they provide an opportunity for us to have closed sessions where there would be no recording and the, that room was secure to ensure that, did they ensure that for us? I think that's going to be important because we do discuss matters in closed session that cannot be out to the public. And because this kind of is a sensitive time in Prince George's County, I want to make sure that our constituents are protected, our PGCPs community is protected, and so do they provide a room that is secure when we have closed sessions? Thank you.
Thank you. Number 13 is... Are there any more questions? Did I get everybody? Okay. That was to Revell, okay, I'm sorry. I want to recognize Revell.
I'll wait patiently.
It's late, man.
So they did assure us that the room that is provided is secure. And additional information, what is actually interesting is that it is, one of the reasons that it's secure is that they have a similar concern when they meet in that room, that other branches of government, because of course, the IT people are not always on, in the council's branch of government. And so making sure that the, that their meetings also aren't recorded, so they did assure us that that room that is provided for closed session would not be recorded or, and that, of course, not broadcast.
Just a follow-up, is there, are we going to have some paperwork to ensure, because if we don't, like I said, this is a very sensitive time in Prince George's County with the politics. If something does go out, are we protected?
What I can do is work with PGCPs staff and our legal counsel, both of our legal counsels, to see if that's something we can secure.
Thank you.
Thank you. 13, all right.
Okay, I just had one last question. This is mainly for the superintendent's team. Are we able, well, I did bring up, when we last, when we first voted on this motion, I did bring up about the, you know, looking for a building, I think even Superintendent House talked about maybe even getting a building and then renovating it into our own headquarters for, for SASSER. So I was wondering if, while we're looking at the pilot, is there any, like, has there been any progress on possibly starting to look for a new headquarters or no?
We actually are in the process of setting up small groups to, to share insight and information and bring all board members up to site on just that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I call a previous question? We have a motion on the floor, so previous question?
Yes.
Which I believe would suspend all conversation and move forward with a vote.
I recognize Mia, can you please call the roll? Question is to rescind the, I don't have the motion in front of me, but it was the...
Take a vote on the previous question first.
Oh, we have to take a vote on the previous question first?
It takes seven.
And it takes seven, seven to adopt? Okay.
Please, please restate.
Can I, Revell, do you have the, the motion restated? I don't have it in front of me.
Point of order, we're voting on the motion for a previous question, which would close a period of debate and move forward with voting on the actual original main motion.
Yeah, shall we end debate? I guess that's, that's what we're voting on right now, right? The previous question, all right. Trying to understand this nomenclature, my bad. All right, cool. So Mia, can you please call the roll? Shall we end debate? That, can you, can you speak to this, Mr. Parliamentarian, please? Yes, there are.
Making me work hard tonight. The parliamentary term is previous question. Shall we order the previous question? And no one understands what that means. In plain language, it means shall we end debate, quit talking? And it takes, in this case, a vote of seven in the affirmative to quit talking. If that's adopted, then you go right to the vote on the motion to rescind. There will be no talking if you get seven votes to stop talking.
Okay. Now, Ms. Barton, can you please call the vote?
Dr. Anderful? Aye. Ms. Boozer Struthers?
No.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Goins-McKens?
Aye.
Mr. Jongo?
Aye.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Walker? Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
We have nine in the affirmative, I'm sorry, we have eight in the affirmative.
Now, Ms. Barton, can you call the motion, can you call the roll on a motion to rescind?
Dr. Anderful?
Nay.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Abstain.
Ms. Goins-McKens?
No.
Mr. Jongo?
No.
Dr. Moss?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
We have two in the affirmative.
Ms. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
All right, moving to Item 20.1. So we're going, motion to adjourn. Ms. Mia Barton, can you please call the roll? Oh, we don't even have to... So I'm sorry, I'm learning nomenclature, say, motion, the motion is to rescind laws.
To rescind, lost.
Okay. Without objection, the meeting can be adjourned. Gotcha, all right, thank you.